Good evening. I called meeting to order here at 6:05. Looking across the board, we have a quorum of Stratum School Board members. So thank you, everyone, for attending. Just a quick reminder, a non-public session may be called, although I don't believe we have anything on the agenda today. But if something were to pop up, right, we would call that in accordance to the RSA. We will be holding off on questions from all of our visitors until after the SMS team report. We have found across the district that a lot of the answers get, or a lot of the questions get answered as part of that report. So what we'll do is we'll go through the full report, then we'll open it up for a period of time to answer any questions. And those will be enabled through chat. So I will sort of moderate those chat questions. Keep in mind, and I'll say this again before we open it up, I may not answer every single question. If there are duplicates, right, we will try and cover the high level point of them. And then certainly we'll give ample time for people to put their questions in and make sure that we get them answered. So with that, I'll look to review the meeting minutes of the September 9th public minutes. So I'll look to the board, any errors or concerns or anything that needs to be modified as part of those minutes?
I had one thing. Under section 7.1, the second line, I'm pretty sure I didn't ensure that parents were aware of the Zoom links. I'm pretty sure. I think I asked the question, do parents know what to do on the first day of school? And the answer was, we provided Zoom links, blah, blah, blah. So could we adjust that to say, Ms. Evilly asked if parents were, if parents are prepared for the first day of school? Or know what to do on the first day of school?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
And then I think Kate, part of your answer was you provided the Zoom links and orientation, blah, blah, blah. So if we could move that over. As Lucas said, parents were aware of the Zoom links for tomorrow and said orientation did help with anxiety, blah, blah, blah.
That makes sense to me. Any other items?
Carissa, did you suggest the board goal of reaching out to support parents? Is that accurate?
Where are you?
On the bottom of that paragraph, 7.1. The parents are very worried that it should be a board goal to reach out and support parents? I don't remember that.
I didn't, I said we should reach, we should support parents, but I don't remember saying that it should be a board goal.
Yeah. So how would you want to change that if you want to change that?
Ms. Magri said, parents are very worried. And it should be a board goal to reach. I think Ms. Magri said, parents are very worried. And there's a need to reach out and support parents. I don't remember saying that to be a board goal.
Yeah, I don't recall, I don't recall that being a board goal either.
I don't have anything else.
I don't have anything else on that. Erin, did you see anything or Carissa?
Question, you meant MOU, correct, on 6.2? You did not mean MOA. Because on 6.2, it says personnel dash MOU.
Esther, how do we sort of, I mean, because I've seen both of them thrown around, right? Memorandum of Agreement as well as Memorandum of Understanding.
We've been going by MOA, so I was a little bit thrown off by that, so.
Yeah, we generally have been saying MOA for, because it's usually called the teacher's agreement for the contract.
So I would may want to fix that just for continuity purposes.
Okay, so 6 to change MOU to MOA. Anything else?
Other than that, looks good.
Right. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I'll make a motion.
And so Chris made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Cheryl. Do roll call vote. Erin, you're first up on the list.
Aye.
All right, Carissa?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Sarah, I think you're abstaining, correct? I didn't get that, Sarah.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. And I will accept. All right. With that out of the way, there is no board chair report today. I think we do have the financial report. I don't, I'm not sure if I've seen Molly. Need to change, Molly is there?
She's there.
Anything that we need to be aware of from the financial report?
Well, in your board pack was the financial report. And right now, we've encumbered everything that we know to date. So this is the first financial of the year. So as we go on, you're going to see the actuals as well as the encumbrances grow. We're right now flipping to the end, if I can get there. It's showing that there is 1.225 million available that's not encumbered. Did anybody have any specific questions on items in the actual financial included in your board pack?
I don't have any specific questions other than the generic question of how are you feeling at this point in time? Given that it's still only October and we still have effectively eight months to go.
I mean, I feel good about it. And the other thing we wanted to talk to you about was emergency order number 38. Esther, do you want me to cover that now as part of this? Okay, perfect. So we were made aware of what they're calling emergency order 38. So if the board was to choose, we could actually, if we, if we didn't feel comfortable with the amount remaining, actually pull back the DOE that some of you have already signed and utilize the fund balance that we ended with last year. So in the DOE that I sent out a few weeks ago, it did have a fund balance of $360,720. So if we felt like we had COVID expenses that we needed to put back to last year in order to stay within our current budget, we do have that option. So what we would need to do is if the board chose to dip into that, we would have to write a letter and apply to use that funding. However, that would reduce the amount that is given back to the taxpayers. So it's really the board's comfort level of how much you would like to give back versus if you think we need to utilize it, any at all. So that there is that option out there. If you.
When does that expire, that option?
We do have to do that before the tax rate is set. So things are a little bit behind at the state. So when we submit the MS-24s, which should be submitted any day now, then we won't have that option. We do have a bit of time, though, I would say a few weeks.
So just to be, just to clarify what you're saying here for the public, this is last year's budget. There was a surplus of unspent monies to the tune of $360,000 that would, as part of that submission, would go back to the town to offset next year's tax rate. So the question here is, you know, to the board, you know, is there, are there any monies that we are aware of as it's related to, you know, unanticipated expenses that were not budgeted for in this current fiscal year? Right, there's an opportunity for us to potentially use some of that money rather than return it to the town. And so I don't know that we're going to make a decision right now on this. I think Molly, given what the presentation is that's coming up, right? And that there may be, there are some anticipated additional costs associated with the return to school plan. I would ask the board to sort of defer on a formal response to this until after we've had a presentation. And then, you know, we can have that as part of our follow-up conversation.
And then there is also one other item that, that might help out with this as well, another opportunity. We were made aware yesterday that, well, as you can remember before, we were informed early in the summer that we would possibly get FEMA reimbursement for a lot of the PPE, such things as mask, protective gear, ventilation work. Then on September 11th, FEMA decided they would not reimburse any of those expenses for the schools. So the state has now potentially letting us request reimbursement through Gopher for what we would have asked FEMA for. So we were told that we would be getting an email or phone call yesterday or today. I did not receive one. David Ryan did not receive one. So we're still awaiting that. So the PPE purchases that I have for Stratum right now are totaling $8,693, which includes mask, face shields, any ventilation work that we've done, ionization. So I am going to try to request reimbursement for that amount of money when that reimbursement is available to request.
Russell?
Can you just go over what Gopher is?
I don't know, Esther, you might actually be able to describe Gopher better than myself. Originally, it was not made available to the schools, however. Esther, if you want to explain a little bit further.
Sure, it's the, it's the COVID CARES Act money. We got ESAR money and CARES Act money, and the towns got what's called Gopher money. And the GOE FFER stands for a long acronym, which I don't know, because we all call it Gopher. But so the towns got separate monies. And if we had expended, if we had my using the right words, if we had spent all of our monies and asked for all of our resources. In other words, let's say we had asked FEMA and we had exhausted that, et cetera, et cetera. Then we could also have asked the town for some Gopher money out of their pot. We never, we were led to believe that we were supposed to apply for the FEMA money, which is what we were doing. And then on September 11th, we got an email at 4:30 in the afternoon that said, nope, you can't, schools can't apply for FEMA money. You should be applying for Gopher. Unfortunately, the Gopher money had to be applied for by September 15th. So Molly worked really hard and contacted the town managers. Of course, most of the towns had already written their grants and expended the amount they had gotten for town items. And I know, I believe you finally connected with Stratum's town manager. And I think that was what happened in particular in Stratum. So that's what the Gopher money is. Now, the governor, we got an email, as Molly said, yesterday, that said we would be getting something to be prepared because it would be additional Gopher money available, which stands for, thank you, Selena, the governor's order for emergency relief and recovery. We did not get that. We, I know Dave was on the call with the commissioner. He does a weekly call for superintendents. He did not mention that today. So we don't really know. That's just what we were told via an email. If we do get that call, we are prepared to apply for that for all of our towns because we can't apply for FEMA anymore as of September 11th. So that's kind of the shift.
Yep, and I did check with my counterpart over in SAU 21, our neighbors, and he did not hear anything either. Because I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss the phone call or miss the email. And they, they did not receive any notification yet either. However, we worked really hard the last two days to gather all the costs that would have been, would have been requested from FEMA. And right now, Stratum's standing at $8,693.
We also did contact Caitlin Davis, who works for New Hampshire DOE as the money person. And she has not gotten any phone call or any notice today either to apply for this. So we are on it if that opportunity becomes available, available to us.
Are there any other expenses that, you know, could be considered for Gopher? Money here, is that, is that at $8,000? I'll take whatever money we can get, but.
Well, it was my understanding that this the direction that we were given is what we would have applied for FEMA. So when we first learned about FEMA, it was specifically said it cannot be used to support education. It has to be protective gear, like face shields, mask, ventilator work. So everything on the list that we have for each district is what we would have requested from FEMA.
Okay. Okay.
If you were to choose to pull back the fund balance, I did talk with the auditors. And additional costs such as cost related to learning for COVID or additional teachers or additional buses, that would be what you could potentially pull back with your fund balance if, if you chose to do so.
Say that again, so we could pull back for buses?
You can, we would have to write a letter, but it has, any, it could potentially be any expense related directly to COVID. It has to be related to COVID, though.
Okay.
And so I would suggest that we sort of table that conversation till after the presentation because there are some anticipated costs. I believe we're in a strong financial position, given where our budget is, but we'll revisit that conversation at the end.
Yep, and I do want to remind you, you did pull some, some items forward to make room for COVID already. So you already set yourself up for success doing that.
Yeah, and for those on, that are asking what that would be, right? We, I think we ordered Chromebooks and, you know, some technology refreshes as well as software in anticipation of, you know, being remote, right? And that was covered prior to June 30th. So the fund balance that we were talking about, that $360,000 number was the final number that included what we had allocated as part for this year. So that's one of the reasons why we feel that we're in a better position this fiscal year.
Yep.
Okay. So Esther, I'll turn over to you for the superintendent report.
Sure, thanks. Quick board report. Of course, we've been working on return to school plans across the SAU. I just want to commend the SMS team. They have done an amazing job in a very short amount of time to do their very best to open with a plan that keeps kids safe and meets as many kids coming in as we possibly can accommodate. So thank you, thank you to the team for working so hard. Really appreciate it. Our next big piece I'm working on is we're going to review and revise our teacher evaluation system, which doesn't directly impact Stratum. But we hope that Stratum will participate and maybe consider doing some things with their evaluation system. We're going to try to move from a deficit-based system to a strength-based system, which coincides with our competency-based system. Pretty excited about this work. We're going to start with developing a portrait of an educator, similar to our portrait of a graduate. And once we have that portrait of an educator developed, what kinds of things do we want to look at in supervision and talk about to make that portrait of an educator a reality for all of our educators? So that process will start October 22nd. We'll have representation from all the schools, administration, union, teachers, et cetera. So excited about that. In the meantime, Chris Andruski has been working hard with DEIJ, the diversity, inclusion, justice, and help me out, sorry, guys, long night last night. Group, he's coming together. He'll make a presentation to the joint board of how all the schools are starting their own DEIJ teams and doing some work with curriculum in the curriculum group, working with two revs and Toyin, who's another consultant in our, in our area who works with PEA. And so that's beginning to come together as a great plan. So he'll be sharing that. That's another big project we've been working on, as well as assessment policies and protocols. That's coming to the principals' group tomorrow and it'll work through the system and eventually make its way to the board. So three big things we're working on out of Chris's and our office. Human resources update. Last time, folks, it asked me for kind of percentages, et cetera, as we work through ADA, FMLA requests, et cetera. When I checked in with human resources today, right now, there are currently seven active cases in SMS they're working through that include pairs and teachers. That does not mean seven will all qualify or not qualify. They're just seven active cases, which is a fairly small number from where we began. So we're in good shape there. And Ellen and Tom Campbell are working through those and following the guidelines with those teachers to determine whether they qualify or not. The last.
And I'm sorry, and the other, the other cases or filings, whatever, they've been resolved one way or the other. So they're already settled.
Currently, we just have seven. It doesn't mean someone else could decide tomorrow to apply. But currently, there are just seven active.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
What was the initial? What did we initially?
This summer, I don't have the exact number for Stratum because Tom was in negotiations meetings, so I was just working with Ellen, who had the current cases. But I know overall, there was about 190. I don't know how many of that was Stratum.
Can I ask you another question regarding the teacher evaluations? So the perspective, you're looking to revise it to a deficit into a strength-based evaluation as opposed to deficit. Right now, is it a deficit-based evaluation or what is the evaluation process at this point in time?
It's a deficit-based, meaning we look at what the problem is and try to correct it. So we come at it to what's wrong, instead of what are you doing well and how do you, how do you continue to improve? So it's really using an appreciative stance, which for our brains, when we take an appreciative stance, it pushes us into innovation and creativity. When we approach people from a deficit base, it pushes us into fight or flight. So as you can see, those conversations would go very differently with administrators if we could come from a strength-based perspective and push people to think creatively and innovatively versus get defensive and feel like they have to fight or flight. It's just, it's just how our brains work.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
To interrupt, I just wanted, I looked back at my notes and the initial request for SMS was 16.
Oh, thanks. Appreciate it. Facilities use, I put that on there because that's come up as a request from the Stratum Recreation Department to use the facilities. As you know, currently, we have a no visitors policy during the school day due to trying to reduce contact and contact tracing and keep everybody as safe as possible. It is up to the board to decide whether they want to open up the building outside the school day. For example, Saturday, Sunday, after hours, et cetera. I believe in Kate, help me out, there's a, there has been a request to use the facility in the evenings till 8 o'clock for students and then men's league in basketball and all day Saturday and half-day Sunday. So initially, we had denied that request. However, it was brought to our attention by the superintendent that it's truly a board decision when it's outside that school day because there's no students in the building during that time. So that's why it's on the agenda for discussion. And I'm not sure if you want to do that now, Eric, or later, or that's up to, that's why it's on the agenda.
Yeah, no, I think now's the appropriate time to discuss it. So this pertains to, I think, the rec basketball, which runs through the rec department from typically from November through February, as well as travel basketball, as well as, I think you mentioned, there's an open gym for community members to come in on Thursdays and Sundays, I believe. So, you know, I think one of the things board has to consider, right? We have a no visitor policy in place in the building. You know, is this the wrong message to be allowing someone to come in and use the facility? As well as it's going to require additional cleaning costs, but it's also, it's additional people in the building as well as not necessarily managed by the school, right? So I'm not sure what anyone else's thought process is here. But my initial thought process is let's get their children into school first before we open up the facility for any other uses.
Yeah, I have a point of view. I've given the, the lengths to which the administrative team has gone to keep our, or to make our building safe for the people who are working there every day and for the children who are there getting services every day and the kids who are in the community care center every day. I think it works at cross purposes to then open up the building to the public daily and on the weekends. And not only works at cross purposes, but counteracts the safety protocols we're trying to put in place so that we can open school and deliver education. And I think the number one priority has to be delivering education. So I strongly do not support doing this. If things change, and I would say indefinitely, as we work through the COVID process or the COVID crisis, if we feel differently later in the year, we can, you know, certainly revisit it. But I don't think it's worth putting our staff or our children at risk. And my second point would be, when we look at where COVID is popping up in the education system, not only in our district, but in districts around us, it's kids involved in outside activities where they're mixing and they're playing sports or they're exposed to coaches or referees who are playing in multiple teams or reffing multiple teams, and it's, it's increasing exposure. And I think that affects education ultimately because kids then go to school. Their classroom has to shut down, et cetera, et cetera. So I really do not think this is the right thing to do.
Said exactly what was in my brain, Cheryl.
Well, you can say it too, Sarah.
You know what Cheryl just said? Times two. I agree.
I agree. I mean, I appreciate that there is a lack of meeting space, and that's across the board, not only for basketball players, but I lead a Girl Scout troop. We're trying to find a place to go to. But I think for what our end goal is, I think that would be disruptive to our end goal and not productive to it. So I strongly advocate against it as well.
Erin, I see you're shaking.
It seems like it's going to be something. Yeah, it seems like it's going to be something that really hinders the cleaning process in the evenings also. And we need to focus our priorities.
So I guess Esther, I think you've got the opinion of the board. I guess, do we need to take a formal vote on that as, as a board to simplify that?
I would, yes.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to suspend non-education-based community activities in the school with the exception of voting and polling, because we are polling location in November. Indefinitely.
Do we have a second? Do you have a second on that?
I don't want, I just have a, maybe a modification. Can we have a point where we can review this or somewhere we can come revisit this? Maybe in the spring or at some point in time? I agree with, with not.
We can revisit in January.
All right, as long as we have that in our mindset, then I'll second that.
Okay, so Cheryl, do you want to sort of restate that with?
Yes, so I'll make a motion to suspend community use of the school building with the exception of voting and polling until the end of January, at which time we'll revisit. How's that?
You have a second? A second by Sarah. Any further conversation on this? A second by Sarah. Any further conversation on this?
The only thing I would add for comments, I have kids who play basketball. I have a husband who coaches basketball. So I feel for the parents who are in the spot and the people who want to play basketball. But it, I don't think they appreciate the lengths to which we are going to try to create a safe environment for their kids to be in school.
And I think that has to be the priority.
Absolutely.
If we'd had everyone in the school for, you know, months, it would be having a different conversation, but we've yet to have kids in the school. And I think that has to be the focus. Alright, so we have a motion and a second roll call vote. Start with Erin.
Aye.
Alright, Chrisa.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
That's it for my section.
Excellent. Alright. So this brings us to. The SMS administrative team reports of the return to school presentation. So thank you to the 190 plus people who have joined us. For those who missed the opening statements, we are going to go through the presentation around return to school. We will open up the chat questions after the presentation is complete because based on our experience and some of the recent. Return to school conversations this week, most of the questions are actually answered in the presentation itself. So when it's completed, we will go through, we will open up the chat function. You know, please, you know, put your questions in. I know you're not going to be able to see, you know, questions that other people have put in. So while I may not answer or may not bring up every single question that's in there, I will group the like questions together and try and make sure that we answer every. Form of the question, right? It may only be answered once, but there may be multiple questions that have been answered as part of it. So with that, I will turn it over to Kate Lucas and Kate, take it away.
Thanks, Eric. Esther's sharing, screen sharing available? Awesome, thank you. So I will start, Eric, and the, and the rest of the board. Earlier tonight, Esther mentioned sort of a thank you to the SMS administration for the tireless planning that went into this. But I think it needs to be extended to the entire staff at SMS. We've had an incredible group of people willing to, to spend hours on this and think of every potential. Version of this and think of all the what ifs and truly come up with a plan that we feel. Is in the best interest of offering in-person learning for those students and families that wish to, for that to be an opportunity for their children. So it really is, has been an incredible team effort. The flexibility, the out of the box thinking has really been a huge part of why. We feel comfortable bringing this plan to the board tonight and to the community at large. So in thinking about the factors that would help us determine what was best for our students. You'll see a list of driving factors on your screen. Those are the same factors that we considered when we were designing our remote platform. I think that's important to mention because we want everybody to know at the heart of every decision we make is truly these factors. And then figuring out what is the best possible way to meet as many of these as often as possible. So tonight, in addition to hearing about the plan that we're proposing for in-person learning. We wanted to cover a variety of the other logistics that are involved in that. Everything from arrival and dismissal to the health and safety protocols have been put in place. And then certainly what next steps will be starting tomorrow morning. So everybody's clear on the timeline of events that it's going to make it possible for us to return to in-person learning very soon. So as you know, at the joint board meeting on September 21st, Superintendent Dr. Ryan expressed to everybody that each school would be working on in-person learning plans over the next couple of weeks. And so we sent out a survey to our parents and collected some preliminary data to give us an idea of what percentage of students would potentially be returning to in-person. Or remain remote or potentially choose to withdraw from SMS and attend potentially a private school or homeschooling. So there were a number of respondents, but there were 474 students that were represented in those respondents. Of those 474 students, 374 students would like, would wish to return to some form of in-person learning. And again, I should mention that we did not know the plan at this time. So this was just initial thinking on the part of parents and caregivers, which could potentially change after tonight's presentation. In addition to the 374 students that would wish to remain in, excuse me, would wish to return to in-person. There were 94 students that would remain remote. Again, eight that would potentially withdraw or attend another educational institution. And then we did ask about transportation. That was also important as we considered budget implications and timeframes for arrival and dismissal. And what was reported is of the 374 students, 95 of them would need transportation. So we use that data to build a plan. We believe will provide quality in-person learning, but also still offer opportunities for families to have an excellent remote experience as well. So the schedule we came up with is, we would, we would be at roughly 50% capacity every day. And so we would, we considered this the blue white schedule. The blue group would be in school Mondays and Wednesdays, and that's the alphabet breakdown of A to L. This way, we're keeping siblings together. Additionally, the white group would be in person on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Again, the alphabet breakdown is M through Z. And then our students in grades kindergarten through five would alternate on Fridays. You'll notice that preschool would not have any programming on Friday, which has always been the case at SMS, but I wanted to make sure that that was clear and not confusing to any family. When a student, when a cohort is here, say they're the blue group and they're Monday and Wednesdays, on the days that they are not here, they'll be participating in distance learning activities. It will not be a remote experience. It will be distance learning activities. They would not have access to their classroom teacher. Because their classroom teacher would be with their other cohort of students. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware that there is a distinction between the two. On the right side of your screen, you will see a draft schedule. And I say draft because we can't possibly have all the grades on the same schedule because of spacing. But this could potentially be the schedule for maybe a kindergarten or first grade classroom. So we anticipate our arrival time starting around 8:40 in the morning. You'll notice that it's staggered arrival. So we would have buses arrive between 8:40 and 8:50 at one location. And then we would have two additional locations for parent drop off or parent and caregiver drop off. So from 8:50 to nine, we would have the alphabet A through C. And then you would notice, and that might be, say, the parent drop off. And then the G through I might be the law, excuse me, the drop off, or typically our buses would drop off. That's quite a large loop and allows for quite a few cars to fit in. And then, of course, from nine to nine 10 would be the additional part of the alphabet that's scheduled for those days. Beginning at nine 10 would be instruction in the classroom. From 10:50 to 11:30 is the recess times would be outside. We have looked at our playground in addition to our field space and we have marked off 10 zones. So that each classroom has its own zone. So we're not mixing cohorts of children, but also providing lots of time for them to be outside to play. This is also the time that our staff would be able to have their lunch. Then from 11:30 to 11:50, students would be eating lunch. As long as the weather is nice, they would be outside. But as we know, this is New England and that seems to change on the, on the hour, but most of the time on the day. So they, if they had to, they would be eating in their classroom. All of the desks, of course, six feet apart and facing in one direction, which is the recommendation of the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. When lunch was over from 11:50 to 1:30, it would be additional instructional time. And for the case of providing this snapshot, I did put related arts in from 1:30 to 2:05. Students would finish out from 2:05 to 2:30 and we would begin our staggered dismissal from 2:30 to 2:55. So as I mentioned, on the days that students are in person, while it will look different because we understand we're following all those health and safety protocols. The learning would be deep, engaging, comprehensive, collaborative learning, which the kids are used to in their attendance at SMS. We would be encouraging and we anticipate that there would be a lot of time spent outdoors. We have incredible access to Stratum Hill Park. To different ecosystems, to incredible trails. And so we anticipate that children would spend quite a bit of time outside. Outside time also allows our children to move more freely and certainly to get fresh air, given the mask wearing at school. So we would ask all parents if they choose this option to send their children with weather appropriate clothes. So we will be outside. Of course, we would provide mass breaks for our students. They would have lunch in the classroom and then they would have access to their related art schedule. Exactly as they currently do right now. The related arts teachers will be remote, but if you're a kindergarten student in Melissa Mastin's room. And your related art has always been at 10:30, it will continue at 10:30. You'll either be doing it from the classroom or from home, depending on the day. And then what to expect during distance learning days? Students again will have access to their related arts class and teachers will be providing a variety of extension activities, independent inquiry tasks. And then also a menu of learning options for students to remain engaged with their academics and their growth. Next is what we're doing with regards to health and safety protocols. And I think the important part here to mention is that we are following the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Service protocols. We are, the, the things that we're putting in place and the things that are being put in place across the entire SAU are not things that we decided on our own or we think is best. They are in fact, the protocols and guidelines that have been recommended and advised by the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. So that's everything from six feet distance, masks, hand hygiene. So we, we refer to that here as the layers of protection. And we're constantly looking at ways that we can increase the layers of protection and certainly asking our staff, staff to think about this of. Their primary responsibility is to keep themselves safe because if they're keeping themselves safe, they're keeping the kids safe. And so we're really having those conversations frequently. And Nurse Lilly has done an exceptional job of supporting both our, our families and our staff around their understanding of how we keep ourselves safe. So additionally, there'll be between seven and 10 students per classroom. And the reason for that scale is that we have rooms of varying sizes throughout the building. So we couldn't just simply look at square footage and divide it up. We actually had to go into the classrooms and measure it out. So here's a desk. We need six feet in front, six feet behind, six feet to the left, six feet to the right. And then we had to ensure that children could then actually move about the room once all of the desks and spaces were set up. So there is a, there's a scale of seven to 10 spaces or students, students in each room. We will be keeping our cohorts small, which means we'll be limiting the number of students that interact with each other and the number of adults that interact with each other. The larger the cohorts get, the more, the higher likelihood that we would have to send a whole grade level home or send multiple classrooms home. And we really want to get the kids here and keep the kids here. So we are going to be very strict with the size of our cohorts. Additionally, because of our protocols and keeping our cohort small, we can do contact tracing in a very concise and clear way. We did install the MERV 13 filters, which came, which was a recommendation and it was discussed at multiple joint board meetings. And as of a couple of weeks ago, we had the bipolar ionization systems installed as well. You'll notice on the right hand column, these are things that are more associated, at least at the top, with the structure of the building. As I mentioned before, we have increased the number of arrival and drop off spots. This was intentional. We want to be able to keep our, our students six feet apart. We want to make sure that's also comfortable and it helps with the flow of traffic in and out of the building. I mentioned the outside zones being broken up. The last few items are pretty important. So we currently, anytime a student is coming to the building, whether it's for services, whether it's for a hike in the morning with our school counselor. Whether it's for the SEL sessions, they are expected to have a, completed the student health screening form. This has been a little bit of a nuisance, but it is absolutely imperative that we do it. And I'm excited to share that they are piloting an online version of that right now and our hope is to have that up and running. Before we start our return to in-person, which should help streamline. This, this important step to ensuring that our kids are safe. I would add there that I think it's really important and we, of course, will continue to educate our families that if any of the answers on that form are yes, the student cannot come to school. And I know that that can be really frustrating because ultimately it seems that every potential symptom of COVID matches every other potential system of any other cold or strep throat or the flu. But truly, it's the best way we know how to keep our kids safe and keep kids coming to school. The next two items, the 10 one rule and quarantining are specific to if a child shows symptoms at school, maybe it's a sore throat. Maybe it's a dry cough, maybe it's a fever. We will be calling home and asking the parent to come get the child. We, this is not a debatable thing. This is what we will be doing. This is the protocol we are expecting to do in schools and will keep our kids safe. And what happens for that child is when they go home, if they choose not to test, if the family chooses not to test, the student must stay home for 10 days. In addition, they must be fever free without any medication for 24 hours and their symptoms need to be improving. So we've shared this information with parents multiple times and we'll continue to share it because it can be very confusing. And then, of course, if the CDC or the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services change any of their protocols, we will make those adjustments, but these are the protocols as they stand right now. And then there's also quarantining. So quarantining can happen for a variety of reasons, but one of the things we want to make sure all of our families understand is that if they travel outside of New England. And we know we're about to embark on Thanksgiving and then the holiday break. If you travel outside of New England and then you return, say, on a Monday, you must quarantine for 14 days and you cannot test out of quarantine. So if you return from a trip to Bali, which is where I would like to be and I know won't be happening. When I returned, my 14 days start after I return. And even if on day 11, I'm feeling great, I still cannot test out because there's that window of when symptoms can occur. So I just want to make sure everybody's really aware of that because I know it's going to be really difficult, but I want people to know ahead of time. The next item on here is we do have a no visitor policy. So parents are not in the building, volunteers are not in the building, the FedEx guy doesn't come in the building, which means my shoes get left on the front stoop. But honestly, we really are doing our very best to keep people out of the building so we can have kids in the building. That is our goal right now. That is our primary focus. And we're going to do everything we think that's going to help that happen. Our bathrooms are cleaned three times a day. We keep record of all of that. And then I know this has come up as well. We do have the electrostatic spray machines and that is used every night to deep clean every space. The next item is called vital oxide. That is an actual spray that's safe to use in the classroom with children in it. And so we are using it on surfaces. I can give an example. Right now, if I'm a case manager and I am working with a student who has come in for a 30 minute literacy service. When that student gets up, of course, I've maintained six feet and I have my mask, but when that student gets up, I cover the desk, I spray the table with the vital oxide. It has to sit for 10 minutes. You don't have to wipe it off. And after 10 minutes, in most cases, it is dry and it has killed the virus. So it's actually been very handy. We have it in every location in the building. And then, of course, we had hand sanitizer machines installed in every location so that we can concentrate and help our students practice the habit of good hand hygiene. Which honestly, we've been doing that in elementary schools for as long as I can remember. Now it just seems to be more important than ever before. We did want to highlight arrival and dismissal. So because of all of the protocols, each bus, each bus will only have a maximum of 22 students. Students must wear a mask on the bus and only siblings can sit together. Otherwise, you have to sit in every other street staggering seats. The health screening form will have to be completed before students get on the bus and we are encouraging the board to consider hiring bus monitors. We anticipate, based on the current numbers, which could change, that we'll need about five buses. But our concern is, of course, ensuring the students are safe in their spaces and with their masks, but we really do feel like the bus driver needs to be focused on the road. And so we would ask that the board consider that. And then, of course, as I previously discussed, we will have two areas for parent and caregiver drop off. They will be staggered times and they will be by alphabet so that a family doesn't have to be in two different locations. They can just drop off at one. And then again, the daily screening form will be required. Hopefully it's digital by that point. And we are expecting that parents and caregivers stay in their car. It's really hard. They want to get out and help their child out. They want to help Gary the bags and we understand all of that. But it just becomes a health issue and a flow of traffic issue. So we are asking that parents and caregivers stay in their vehicles at drop off and pickup. So as I mentioned, there are some financial implications for the board. The bus monitors, we did some numbers and they're roughly about $17,000. Starting in early November and going till the end of the year. Of course, we understand that that's all fluid as Dr. Ryan loves that word. We anticipate we would need five, which would be roughly $85,000. And given the magnitude of cleaning that needs to take place. And how things are so rapidly changing and we are about to embark on winter time. We do believe we would need an additional custodian for the remainder of the year in order to keep this, the building and the children and staff safe. So the financial implications at this time, I would suggest are roughly around $104,000. We have a variety of activities and next steps in order to open the doors for in-person learning. So as I mentioned before, we had done a preliminary survey. Tomorrow morning, we will send an additional survey or a follow-up survey out to our families. This will be a binding survey. So the information. This will be a binding survey. So the information that parents indicate on this survey will be binding. Our expectation is to review this current plan, both the remote and in-person in early March, once we get through February. As everybody is aware, this is a monumental task to do it and do it well. And we need to give it time to play out and not to cause another disruption to everyone's lives. So the survey will go out tomorrow morning. We are asking that families respond to the survey by noon on Monday, the 19th. There are essentially two questions on the survey. There's a question again about transportation. And then really the big question is asking parents to place a priority on their decision. So there are essentially three choices. Parents can prioritize that the most important part for them is that their child return to in-person learning. They could also prioritize that the most important thing is that their child remain remote. And then the third option is going to be that they prioritize their child's teacher, which would mean they do not get to, a parent will not have a say in whether it's remote or in-person, but what they will be saying is the most important thing to them and for their child is the continued relationship with the current teacher. So those will be the three options presented to families on the survey. And again, I would remind everybody that that is a binding commitment. Almost, you know, within days of, or within hours of getting the survey data back, we will begin working on teacher assignments and student placement. And ultimately, we can't really do any of that until we get the survey back. There are just, it's just impossible without that information. So our hope is to begin that on the 19th. Almost simultaneously, we will begin communicating with families. Everything from the logistics of a day to who their new teacher might be, if that's the case, to whether they are, you know, which entrance they're coming to, all sorts of stuff. And I think probably paramount at this time will be really helping parents understand all the protocols at depth. Nurse Lilly has a variety of handouts and information that we can continue to share with families to help both alleviate their concerns, but also answer their questions. While all of this is going on, the educational staff will be undertaking a giant plan. They're going to be spending a lot of time planning. And so that will be learning about the students that may be new to their roster. That will be potentially working with new case managers and new related service providers because they have a new roster of students. It will be preparing their space. So we currently have four CCC rooms. We have our entire special education staff down on the first floor. We have monopolized every area in order to spread everybody out. And now we have to reshuffle all of that in order to prepare for students to return. So we have a pretty monumental task in front of us. And you'll notice facilities preparation. I can't say enough about Tim and his crew. Tim has been our savior through, through much of this. He is incredibly accommodating and flexible and supportive. And his staff has been right there with him. So again, we're, we're having to put down markers. We're going to have to have flow of traffic. We're going to have to make sure we have all the supplies in the places we need it. I mean, there's just really quite a bit to do. And then I am proposing to the board that we return to in-person learning on Monday, November 9th. This next slide is a more detailed look at some of the dates coming up and what we anticipate or would like the board to approve. So as I mentioned, the survey will go out tomorrow and we're asking for that to be returned by next Monday. From the 19th to the 23rd, we anticipate lots of work around teacher assignment and student placements. On Monday, the 26th, we are asking the board to approve an early release day. As you know, we canceled our early release day in September. We would like to have it replaced on this day for, for a variety of reasons, some professional learning, some planning, but also to have time to meet with Nurse Lilly to get all of our answers and protocols clearly established and understood by everybody. On 10:30, it's a Friday. This would be the last day of, of us being able to offer the CCC. And it would also be the end of our SEL sessions. In order to move all of the rooms around, in order to get the adults in the room, in the building safely, we will need to have children out of the building that week of November 2nd. November 2nd, we are proposing an early release day for student-led conferences. We typically have two days in the month of end of October, beginning of November for student-led conferences. It makes sense to us educationally to do these before we transition back to in-person because this way we are guaranteeing that the teacher that's meeting with the parents and the student knows the student because they've had them for the last 10 weeks or eight weeks, I suppose, at this point. Election Day is 11-3, which is also a teacher workshop day, which provides another opportunity for us to both learn professionally, transition curriculum, but also to collaborate. 11-4 would be our second early release day for student-led conferences. As everyone knows, we have two days. And then I am proposing on 11-5 and 11-6, there's no school for students, but educators are here planning for a smooth, safe, exciting opening on the 9th. And that is that final date on that slide. I did want to end the presentation with a brief sort of, I, I think what is a brief synopsis of what the, is being proposed to parents and the, and the decisions and considerations for them as they move forward. So for, just to sort of capture what it would mean for in-person in a 10-day cycle, so in a two-week cycle, students would be in-person five of those days and would be participating in distance learning the other five days. This enables us to have small class sizes. This offers face-to-face connection with peers and with staff at SMS. It allows for access to all of SMS's resources. It provides a three-dimensional learning experience and it reduces screen time. For those families and students that choose to remain remote, those students would have a Monday through five, Suzie, Monday through Friday, five days every week. The same schedule roughly, 9:10 to about 2:30. It provides continuity of instruction and provides routine and structure, which our students are accustomed to and reduces children's exposure to COVID, potentially, I should say. And then the bottom part of that, I think it's really important to mention this and to reassure our families. Over the month of September, we had 90 IEP team meetings to determine what was the best path moving forward for our students that had IEP services. And at those conversations, we talked about both service delivery mode being whether it was remote or in-person, but also the level of service. That will not change unless another team meeting is called. So if we had a meeting on September 26th and I was the LEA for that meeting and we decided a child might be coming to SMS five days a week for 30 minutes of literacy instruction, that will remain the same, even if those are, even if they're off days or distance learning days, they would still have access to come to the building for those services. And it would only be a team decision to alter that. So my hope is that I answered most of those questions for people, but I'm sure there's others to follow. So at this time, it's open for discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's very helpful. So if you don't mind, Esther, if you could open up the chat window for the community to ask some questions. I, I do have just one question in general, and this is I think for Kate and also for Esther. And I asked it previously. You know, what are some of the lessons learned, not only from Brentwood, but also from other areas that have already opened up school? I mean, what lessons have we learned and how are we sort of applying them as we look to open up SMS?
So I've, I've done a lot of talking with other administrators, both in the SAU and outside of the SAU. And I think some of the, the lessons that have probably been most important are certainly keeping the cohort small. By keeping the cohort small, you have a much more, you have the, the ability to truly manage the number of trip, or potentially manage the number of transitions students will have to experience. I think one of the things that we're seeing is that there are schools that have to quarantine a grade level or two classrooms or these teachers. And we really believe that we want to limit that as much as possible for continuity. And so certainly keeping our cohort small is important. Additionally, we really felt it was necessary to think about our outdoor space and how to best utilize our outdoor space. It seems that the schools that are utilizing their outdoor space are finding students are more engaged. They have more energy. They're more present and it's safer to be outside certainly than inside. I think communicating with families as often as possible about what's going on and being transparent and acknowledging that this is going to not be perfect every day, but there's going to be some roadblocks is also an important lesson we've learned from other schools that are bringing kids back in. I don't, Esther, if you want to add anything?
I just think on our end, from an SAU perspective, we've learned kind of the steps and the protocols when there is a positive test and who does what. For example, the school nurse calls DHHS if we've been notified by a parent. And then we go through that process with DHHS. The superintendent will send a letter to the school. Phone calls will be made to the possible students that had direct contact from the school level, usually the school nurse and our administration. And then really it turns over to DHHS hands, meaning whatever they decide for quarantining and who that is. That's, that's what we have to follow. So we don't end quarantines for kids. We, we actually had a letter from DHHS stating the quarantine has ended and we can readmit the student to school. So those decisions are not up to us. Just the, we learned how to do that kind of initial protocol and process to make sure everyone's on the same page as positive cases pop up here and there.
I would add too, Eric and I probably should have mentioned this before, there, we have not experienced, nor have I heard, at least in the local area of transmission at school. So I think that's a really important thing too. So the schools that are truly following the protocols of six feet, of wearing masks, of keeping your cohort small, while they may have to quarantine or close, it has not been spread at school. And that's a really important part of the lesson. You know, Brentwood brought back 60% of their kids. So they are just about a capacity we would be at. And their instances have not been transmission at school, but have been in outside events.
Crystal?
I just, I have two questions. First, you had said that the, for a child to return, it has to be shown that their condition is improving. Is that based upon parent report or is that medical or doctor documentation?
So ultimately, and Lily, if you need to chime in, ultimately it really is our parent, I don't want to call it a social contract because I think that that's going down a road that's really difficult, but I do believe that as a community, if what we believe is important is having our children in this building, we all need to be as conscientious as we possibly can be and as honest as we can be. And I know that this is really trying times for everybody. I'm also a parent. But it really is, if the child didn't go to the doctor, right? When we mentioned that a parent may choose not to take their child to a doctor, it would be the, I would be trusting the parents and I, and I feel like I do trust our parents to be honest about whether or not the child's symptoms are truly improving. It could also be a note from the doctor too, of course.
That's fine. Thank you. And just one more question. So it sounds like we're prepared in terms of PPE, that vital oxide for now. Are we prepared to carry with all those materials through the end of the academic year or are we going to need more?
So we'll definitely have to place additional orders, but we do have across the SAU, Rusty Lister, who is the facility, director of facilities across the SAU and works in tandem with Tim often, does have, does have quite a few supplies and we always, when we need things, we just make requests to him. But my anticipation is we'll know more as we grow further into this experience and may say, we need more of this or more of that, and we would just need to order it.
Okay. So that shouldn't be, that supply should not be a problem.
They have the supply of things. We need like masks and the vital oxide and all of those things. Yep. I'm just thinking of other things that we may not have thought about. I can give you an example of that. And one of the things that we're thinking about asking parents is to send their child with a five-gallon bucket with a lid. And so our reasoning behind that is a couple of things. Number one, it's easy to clean. Number two, you can put stuff in it like a clipboard and some crayons and a marker and a jacket and a water bottle. And then it's got a lid on it. And so if we say, okay, guys, we're going to go outside because it's beautiful out and we want to get outside so we can sit apart from each other and potentially have a mass break. They have an automatic stool. So just things like that, that I anticipate will be, you know, we potentially may find other things that we're like, oh, that really works. Let's add that to the list of things we want in order to best facilitate the learning that takes place in person.
Okay. Thank you, Kate.
All right. Looking at Cheryl, Sarah or Erin, anything before I dive in, we've got about 30 questions so far that have popped up.
I have some questions, but I think that the parents can go ahead and go first. Mine are more about financial bus monitor, that type of thing. So dive in.
So one of the first questions, why do people have to choose between their current kid's teacher returning to school or staying remote? I think my, my first answer to this is just going to be partially, it's a numbers game in terms of how we balance the services we provide. But I'll turn it over to Kate and team to, you know, for full response on that.
Not sure I understand the question. They have to decide because we have to build a plan. I don't, am I missing it? Am I?
The idea that we can only get half capacity. We need a decision on who's coming so that then we can prepare rosters, the building, et cetera.
I think the reason we're surveying parents is because we would like to be able to honor their first choice. And so if their first choice is for their child to remain remote, we would want to honor that. If their first child, if their first choice is for their child to be in person, we would want to honor that. And I've also heard from a number of parents who said, I'm not really stuck on whether it's in person or it's remote. I care more about my child remaining with the teacher. And so we wanted to also hear from those parents and try to honor that as well.
Um, next question, will the YMCA, will YMCA before and after care be allowed in the building?
YMCA is not after, offering before and after care right now. They're only offering all-day programming.
Will that still be in our building or is that elsewhere?
It has not been in our building and at this time, they are not planning to move back to our building.
Okay. Great. Can you expand upon what distance learning would look like for families that decide to return to school? So for those, those children who are not, the days that they're not at school, what would that look like?
So the teachers will have prepared activities, whether it's through seesaw, whether it's through clever than accessing certain options, but they will not have a structured routine that they would normally have. You know, in the current remote experience, because they won't have access to their classroom teacher because their classroom teacher will be with their, their other cohort of students. You know, we anticipate for particularly trying to find a balance, as we've tried to do with remote, between activities they can do online, whether it's accessing one of the apps that we have purchased or a combination of other activities that they can do that don't require them to be in front of a screen. They will have, they will have their remote, excuse me, related arts class every day. So they will have that as part of their structured time and there will be learning activities and tasks, but it will not be structured like it currently is in the remote experience.
What is put in place in the event my child needs to quarantine? If they are in person and now have to quarantine 14 days, will, will they be provided with work assignments?
Absolutely. We would treat it very similar to, should a student in the past had gone home with strep throat and had to be out for a week and we provide the learning tasks and the extension activities for those students. And we would do the same for a student that needed to potentially quarantine or had strep throat and didn't need to quarantine, but had strep throat.
Can you share the rationale for not allowing students to provide a negative COVID test in lieu of quarantine? And I believe the answer is DHS recommendations, right? Or DHS recommendations?
Yep, correct.
Yeah. So that, that, you know, that's the guidelines that the state is providing to us, right? So the, the state will determine what we can do there as a result of that.
And also, if I could just jump in, Eric, real quick, for that one, they do, I mean, you can get a negative COVID test and then you don't have to quarantine for the 14 days. Is that what, if that's what they were referring to, if it's travel or they were put into quarantine by the state, then they cannot test out of quarantine. But if they end up with a positive COVID test, then they would go in the 10-1 rule. If they end up with a negative COVID test from being sent home from school with symptoms, that's also not, that's different as well.
Correct. So it really depends on the situation in that, in that case, right? If you're in school, you go homesick, you have a negative test, right? You can come back. If you have been exposed outside to someone who has tested positive, then you know, it's a, it's an automatic 14-day quarantine, regardless of a negative test.
Correct.
Let's see. So it's a duplicate to curriculum. If someone in SMS travels outside of New England, they quarantine. What if someone visits an SMS family or staff member from outside New England? How is that handled?
They do not have to quarantine. It would, that's not the way that this, the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services set their guidelines. So they can visit because again, it's a, they're, they're coming here, not you have traveled there to unknowns, I think is the understanding. And I think part of that too, is that there's like degrees of separation that play into all of that. And so if you have family members that come here from Texas, you do not have to quarantine. I asked that specific question multiple times myself.
And it's a, it's a difficult one, right? Because I, I you could argue the exposure is the same regardless, right? I, I think my, my sort of answer to that would be slightly different. I, I think we need to be cognizant that that poses a risk to the entire school, right? So my recommendation would be to, if you want to keep your kids at school, limit the amount of people who are coming into your house. I think it's just common sense at this point. Can we get a copy of the slides presented? Can we get a copy of the slides presented?
So they will be attached to the survey when I send it out in the morning. It's already attached, so the survey is ready to go out in the morning and it's right at the very top of the survey is access to the slides.
Eric, did you skip over one?
I did, I just.
Okay, because we already covered that.
The best part, too, we said, thank you for all your hard work. What is the process and plan for when a student or staff tests positive?
Sure. So if a student tests positive, either the doctor's office or Nurse Lilly will be calling the Department of Health and Human Services and they tell us exactly what to do. They make determin, they do the contact tracing, they make determinations for who quarantines and who doesn't. And then they make determinations for who is notified and they sometimes do the notification or they would ask us to do the notification. And additionally, we send out a form letter to all families, letting them know that a member of our community has tested positive for COVID.
You mentioned choice three being prioritizing teacher. If someone selects a, if one selects a teacher, what does that mean for the student? Do they return in person or could they possibly stay remote? And I guess the question is, is if that teacher is remote, does that automatically mean they're remote or?
Yep. So if, if the parent selects that the most important priority is to remain with the teacher, then they'll end up either remote or in person based on where we have to assign that teacher. And that would have been the choice the family made was the teacher versus the location.
There's a partial question here. If the school capacity is 50%, I think the, what's the rough and tough number that we think we're going to have in the school? Is it roughly 50% or is it closer to 40%?
It'll be closer to about, well, I don't know. See, that's really hard to tell right now without the additional data, right? Without, we have preliminary numbers that would suggest 95 children out of 474 would choose remote. I imagine that that's going to adjust. And since that survey, we've also had a number of students that have chosen to homeschool or go to private school. So I really feel like I can't answer that. I think it'll be somewhere between 40 and 45% at any given time.
How long is the decision from the survey binding? If I choose remote or in person now, can I reevaluate? I think we were saying that that would be March before looking at that.
And, and I don't want to, what I feel like is really important to stress is that March, it would be a review of how things are going and it could potentially be that we would be offering different options and it might not just simply be, I chose remote and now I have in person. I think there are so many variables that have to play out over the next couple of months and I think that that's why we chose March as an appropriate time. The weather is shifting at that point. We've gotten through the vast majority of holidays. We've been able to find a rhythm without any significant disruptions and it really felt like March was an appropriate time for us to reevaluate and then determine next steps.
And I guess this is probably a question for Nurse Lilly. What guidelines we discuss for kids who have seasonal allergies?
I can actually answer that, Eric. One of the things that families can do is they can complete, a doctor can complete a form and give it to Nurse Lilly with, the staff is the same. So for, for example, if I have migraines and I have doctor, documentation from my doctor, I can give that to Lilly. And then if I have a migraine at school, I'm not necessarily having to do the 10-1 rule because I have documentation from my doctor that in fact I suffer from this already. So the same thing would be, would be the case for a child that has pretty significant seasonal allergies. If the doctor can send us a letter indicating that, we could work with that information versus the kid came down with post nasal drip.
Okay. Two questions. How will parent classroom assistants fit into this equation? And then will they also be in the classroom? What if a child has an IEP and they need a shared assistance? How will that work with COVID protocols?
So we know which of our students have access to an ESP and those, and again, those are IEP, that's a binding legal document. So those students would still receive that, that support. So we've obviously taken that into consideration when we think about the number of people in a room. That being said, in years past, we've had additional gen eds ESPs that potentially will look different this year because obviously keeping our cohort small and teachers will have half their class at one time. And so a teacher with nine students is very different than a teacher with 19 kindergarten students. So those are factors that play in, but the IEP would still be, all of the parts of the IP would still be put in place.
Will we continue to reevaluate return to school with the hope of full-time return at some point this academic year or is this the plan for the remainder of the current academic year? I think you sort of touched on that being that we will be reevaluating in March.
Correct.
So a question in place. You mentioned 10 days plus one day with no fever and choice not to test. What happens if the family tests? At what point can the student return?
That's another great question. So if a student tests and the test is negative, as long as they are fever for, fever free for 24 hours, which is in place all the time for us and their symptoms are improving, they can return to school. And that could be two days, it could be four days. I'm, it's not a day limit. It's more about improved symptoms and fever free without medication for 24 hours.
You wanted, you want to hop up and at least talk about, you know, we've talked about most of this under the one above, but we haven't talked about the specials on the, on the distant learning days.
Sure. Would you like me to speak to that a little bit, Cheryl?
Does that make sense? Yep. So in order to, so our related arts teachers in a typical week are exposed to 560 kids. That is an absolutely unacceptable position to put anybody in right now and it would then make us one giant cohort, not, not small cohorts of 15 or 20, not even, I guess, 15 or 18. So related arts will remain remote. What that also means is that if you're, again, I'll go back to Melissa Mastin's and your art class is at 10:30 on Mondays. If you happen to be the blue group, which means you're in school on Mondays, Mrs. Dow will be on, on the whiteboard doing her remote lesson with the students in the classroom. At the exact same time, those students are in the white group, which means they're at home in Melissa Mastin's class, will be participating in the exact same art class with Ms. Dow and all of their classmates. So essentially, kids are either remoting in from the classroom or remoting in from home, but students' related art schedules that all families are accustomed to at this point are remaining the same for their children regardless of their location.
Does that answer Cheryl, the question you had?
I think so. I think we've answered the rest of it with, you know, the in-home activities that they will be completing when they are not in the classroom on the days that they're at home.
One of the questions that I was asked earlier and I, and I wanted to address it really quickly. It is true that for remote students, the SEL opportunities will have to conclude. But I also think it's really, really important to mention that we will constantly be looking for ways to keep our kids connected to the building and to offer some sort of in-person associations. I don't want to offer right now that we're committed to SEL the way it has looked because I think that that would be an undertaking that we're not prepared to really wrap our heads around quite yet because our focus is really about getting kids in the building. But I do believe, having talked to a number of our staff and thinking about the things that Jesse Caldwell is offering right now in terms of hikes in the morning and in the afternoon, that, that there are teachers that will be in the remote experience that may potentially be looking to have the kids meet them at Stratum Hill Park on a Thursday afternoon because it aligns up with the ecosystem study. Or they just did a, you know, they just finished a poetry unit and they want to do a poetry slam. I envision these things being outside. I don't want to suggest otherwise, but I truly believe that everybody on staff is savoring those times when we come together. And I imagine as long as we can find ways to do them outside, I see us continuing to look for ways to do that, although I don't want to commit to the same format that we're currently using. I do see that being something we look to do.
And I think just to dovetail that point, right? I mean, we've, we've had a great fall so far in terms of weather, but you know, we're, we're only weeks away from the white stuff flying, right? So that could obviously make it difficult to, you know, use that, those outdoor spaces. Although I think, you know, Kate, as you sort of put it, right? Sprinkles are one thing, downpours are another, right? You know, that we have to find a way to make sure that the children are coming to school prepared to be outside, right? So that we can give them those mask breaks and be able to allow them to be outside. There's a question for those of us who withdrew by a desire for in-person school. How will we access important information about returning to school before we officially re-enroll?
Yep. So Susan Kopecky, one of the administrative assistants, has all of those families that withdrew for homeschooling or other purposes in a group email. And she will be sending out the survey, which will again have access to the slides. She'll be sending that out to all of those families tomorrow so that they can access this information.
What is the schedule for students who remain remote?
Same schedule it is as now, it'll just be extended by 15 minutes. So again, it'll be a 9:10 to 2:30. And part of that was just to try to mirror very similar to what the kids will be experiencing from the duration of the lengths of the day. So they will be with their classroom teacher, the potential ESP that's been associated with their classroom and very much the same structure and routine and consistency that they've been experiencing.
For a positive case, what, if there's a positive case, what is the estimate, what is SMS proposing that the closure would look like?
So I think that's really, really dependent and case-specific. And the reason I say that is it could be a positive case, but, and we may have to quarantine the entire class, but if everybody's still healthy, it would just switch to a remote environment. However, if the teacher became ill, we're talking about something very different. So it really is case-specific.
But you're not envisioning, I mean, one positive case doesn't mean the school closes.
No, that's.
Right, yeah. It's within the, is a little group of, of, of the cohort that's exposed, et cetera. Okay.
There is DHS guidance in terms of, you know, how schools should respond to this based on the infection rate, not only within the building, but also within the community as well. So there are guidelines by which the district is following for that.
Correct. I think one of the things that we should reiterate and I think is important because I think the community needs to be aware of that. And, you know, our hope is certainly that we are limiting this and we are, and we are managing this as effectively and efficiently as possible. But there is also potential, as we know, there's, they are talking about, you know, a second wave or whatever they want to call that because I don't want to get hung up in that. But right now, we're doing quite well with our staffing with, because people have literally pitched in at every corner. But there's always the potential that there's a staffing issue. If we have a number of teachers that do get sick, if we have a number of teachers, I can give you an example, we have teachers here who live in Epping, who live in Brentwood, and then their children are all of a sudden home because they did have to quarantine, as you know, in both schools. That does create a staffing concern for us. And hopefully, you know, everybody stays healthy so we can offer some sort of remote experience in those instances. But there's also potential that they're not healthy and that would mean some back and forth for our kids. And I just want to be upfront and honest with everybody about that, that one of the compromises we make to return to in-person is the accepting that there's potential for transition for staffing and for health.
And those kind of transitions, you could be notified with very little lead time, right? Like you find out four o'clock on, or five o'clock on a Tuesday that everybody's, you know, not coming to school the next day for that classroom, for example.
Correct.
I'm just making that up. I don't know, but it could be a short term, a very quick turn to a different format.
Okay. Correct.
So a question around pods, are there, you know, if they're alternating days or five to 10 days, is their ability to keep students that are in a pod together on the same schedule?
There is not. I mean, there might be, that might happen, you know, coincidentally, but there is not, we can't make that effort given the, the alphabet breakdown and given the requests that are going to be so varying. Part of our alphabet breakdown and the way we split up the schedule is that we, because we know we have families that have children at SMS and CMS and EHS, there was a real drive across both Exeter's elementary schools, which are large like Stratum, CMS and EHS to use a very similar breakdown with a very similar alternating structure so that a family would have children on the same days versus being in different locations on different days, really creating a very difficult puzzle for families.
At what temperature would the school say they're not going outside into the winter months?
So we currently, I believe we use 15 degrees. Lilly, is that accurate? For recess, it feels like, feels like.
Yeah, I, it's fifth, somewhere in that range, like 15 to 18 somewhere feels like, I believe.
Academy of, American Academy of Pediatrics actually gives us a recommendation and we follow that. And I believe it's a feels like 15.
Will there be any in-person interaction for remote students?
So I, our hope would be yes, and I think I'll go back to what I was saying before. We currently offer a variety of things, whether that's time in the morning, lunch bunch, some intervention, some SEL sessions. And certainly, we would like to continue to offer those things. I just don't know the structure of those things at this time. It really is going to depend on a variety of factors. What, what percentage of students stay remote? Which percentage return to in-person? Which teachers are in which assignments? What space we have available? What the weather is? I mean, there's just so many variables and I, you know, want to be honest that right now, our focus is trying to prepare as best we can for in-person and then certainly to figure out with the staff that is remote, how do we offer opportunities for some in-person connection and learning?
If an in-person classroom must go remote, will students then have a full week of education remotely or will they only get two to three days of direct instruction?
No, they would, there, if they go remote, it would be a very similar structure to what we currently have for remote, which is a five-day, you know, 9:10 to 2:30, 2:15, 2:30.
The response deadline on the survey?
Monday, Monday, October 19th at noon.
Let's see, so I think we sort of touched upon the safe program, that that's not being spun up. He's sort of touching on the same question before. If a parent travels outside of New England with a child, that parent not be allowed at the school, need to quarantine.
So I'm, no, so the child would not, that's a degree of separation. So if the parent travels, the, this child could still return. It would be if the, if the child travels outside of New England.
I think, so there's another question around what can teachers expect? What, what, what can we expect for teacher assignments if we decide to go to school as kids have developed relationships in their current classes? And I think that gets back to option three where you can request a teacher specifically, but then you are, you know, you're at the mercy of whether they're teaching remote or in-person at that point. So I think that's just a decision you'll have to make as part of that process. Will students wear their own masks or school provided?
So at this point, parents are providing masks for children. We do have extra masks at school because we've had students sneeze in their mask or get sick in their mask or drop it in a puddle or things of that nature. So of course we have extras, but we are asking that parents send their child with a mask. A couple of things about that. The mask cannot have sort of a vent. There's some of them that come with a vent in it. They may not wear those masks, those are not suitable, nor may they wear a gaiter. They must wear an actual cotton mask. The other ones have not, there's no science behind their effectiveness. And actually, the ones that have the little port, there's actually concern that they actually do none, none of what we would hope that they would do. So we are asking parents provide their child with a mask and then we have extras should they be needed.
Kindergarten, kindergarten classes are so small right now. Have you considered allowing our youngest learners to attend five days in person?
So the issue is that they're small right now, but the vast majority of families that said that they would be homeschooling or keeping their children home have said they would return if we were in person, which means our class size would no longer be small enough to be able to do that.
So distance learning sounds like what was happening in the spring. How is it going to be different and more academic and educational?
So I think there's probably some parallels to spring in the sense of that there's more, or there's a lack of that same, you know, routine and structure in terms of like at nine o'clock you do this and at 10 o'clock you do that. It will more be here's a variety of tasks and activities that we're asking your children to engage in, but that structure or schedule would be something that the family and children will work out together.
Are students that need to remain remote going to be exempt from in-person services? I'm guessing that that, those are IEP plans potentially?
So if an IEP team decided that the child would remain with remote services, we would continue with that unless there was a meeting called and they wanted to change. But if a, if there's a student with an IEP who chose to be, whose family chose to stay remote, then the services would remain remote if that was what the team decided.
Yeah, I think that question could be for intervention services, but the same plan.
Yep.
So I think there's another question in here and I think we sort of touched on it, but I want to bring it up again. I think it's important. How will, you know, teachers in the school navigate the path of deciding whether a child has COVID versus a common cold? Children get colds? How do we maximize in-person learning when keeping the environment safe as for all? I see Lilly raising your hand potentially you want to answer that.
So honestly, really, the only way that we will know that is by, is by the families keeping their children out of school when they are feeling ill and by actually getting[1782.96] Is by the families keeping their children out of school when they are feeling ill and by actually getting those COVID tests done. So you can expect for mild symptoms that we would. Kind of ask you to exclude your child from school and then get the test done. So that's really honestly, the only way that we're going to be able to distinguish is the, is getting a COVID test done.
Will children's desks have protective barriers such as plexiglass dividers around the desks in the classrooms?
They will not have that. We have some service delivery, whether that's case manager or related service provider, we have plexiglass barriers. But that's often enables us to, it's an extra layer of protection. It's an extra, we call that an extra layer of protection. But students will not have plexiglass barriers around their desk. That's why we've placed everybody at six feet and will be wearing masks.
So I, I see a common theme of questions here. I'll, I'll read one or two of them and I'm going to sort of state my statement and then I'll let the. I'll let the administrators weigh in, right? But is it permissible to ask our teachers whether they'll be remote or in person? We love our, our teachers. How do we, you know, sort of keep our, our child with our teachers? You know, the one thing I'll say, I've been involved in the board for eight years. There isn't a bad teacher in this classroom and every student falls in love with every teacher that they've had. My two daughters still talk about all their teachers from, from SMS. So, you know, my, my word to the community is, you know, trust in the process and that you're going to get a great teacher regardless. But I think what the administrative staff and Kate, I'll let you respond fully is. I don't think that we can make any promises there, right? I mean, we have to try and service the needs of everyone and you're going to have to make a decision as to, you know. What your prior, what your desires are really.
Eric, I think that's exactly right. I think that. I love that you said every teacher is good. They are amazing. I cannot, what they have done for the students and community. This fall blows my mind on a regular basis and I don't ever want to say I'm surprised by it because I shouldn't be surprised, but I am impressed at every corner and every turn. But I think that's why the question is posed as it is on the survey. If families truly. Feel that that relationship between their child and the teacher is the most important, then they should select that option and that's what will happen. But that means that they will not have the ability to choose whether that's in person or remote. It will instead be that the most important element for them moving forward was keeping their child with that teacher.
Do kids have to wear masks outside?
So there's a couple of things we've learned through the CCC. If a child is willing to maintain distance outside, they can take their mask off. What we are experiencing currently is that's very, very, very challenging for our kids. Understanding six feet and staying six feet is a whole new ballgame for them. So we literally explicitly teach and practice all the time. But an example would be. One of the things that the students decided at the CCC was if they were playing on the equipment on the playground, they, they decided because they didn't want to have to worry about six feet at every corner. That they were going to keep their masks on. However, there's plenty of space out in the fields that is allocated to. The opportunity for kids to run around without masks on because they're not breaching that six foot. Distance, which has been really the guidelines that have been set by the CDC and the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services since the very beginning. If that changes, I mean, I want to be clear too, because I think that's really important. Again, we are following those guidelines. If they're, if they change, that's another conversation. But this is what they are currently as of, you know, October 14th.
And there's a question here, and they were, they were a little concerned about how to phrase this clearly, but I think I understand the gist of what they're asking. Given there's only 20% that have indicated remote, how will you be able to cover all grade levels with teachers? Are you going to be asking them to cover multiple grades, grade levels? As part of it, seeing as the numbers are effectively the minority of the population based on the previous survey?
So we, again, I'll go to this, the preliminary survey, it was almost an equitable breakdown across every grade level. It was almost 20 kids at every grade level that were choosing remote. Which would enable us to have potentially, again, this is preliminary and I feel like it'll change by, you know, tomorrow at noon. Potentially that there would be one teacher per grade level that would be remote. And then we would have the remaining number, whatever that happens to be, whether it's three, four or five, that would potentially be in person. It's really hard to, to, to make any guarantees because we don't have numbers, you know, it might be that we have a K1 or we have a three, four. I don't have an answer to that and I don't want to commit because we don't have any solid numbers right now.
There's a question about, are teachers restricted from traveling? Especially as we approach the holidays?
Oh, no, I would, teachers are adults and they get to choose to do that when they have a vacation or weekend. And we would honor that just as we would. I mean, they're professionals, adults that have to make decisions. I have, you know, there might be a staff member who has an ailing father that's in Wisconsin and I can't imagine suggesting that they don't go visit their father if they have an opportunity. So the same respect that we're asking. You know, I don't want it to be frivolous travel, like I wish I could go to Bali, but clearly I'm not going to Bali. And I'm not, but I also want to honor that every single, you know, community member, whether they are a resident or not, has to make really difficult decisions. And I want to be able to offer support to everybody, whether that's a parent, a child or a staff member.
I think it's safe to say, right, if they travel out of New England, right, they would be asked to quarantine upon their return.
Absolutely.
We choose to start the year remotely, can we change the in-person at the start of a new quarter, such as the spring, our family changes or vaccine becomes available? I mean, I think one of the things we had said was it will be reevaluated in March. This would be a binding decision until that time. How will the CCC students that need additional learning support be aided? And I think it would also behoove us to define CCC. Because I saw it somewhere and I've already forgotten the acronym.
The CCCs are our community care centers. We currently have 40 students that come every day. They are participating in the remote learning experience. They just happen to be housed out of the building. So that many of these students were really struggling accessing remote learning, whether it was executive functioning, whether, whatever that was, there were a variety of reasons. The CCC will close should the board vote for this return in plan, return to in-person learning. The CCC will end on October 30th. It is a Friday and that would be the last day of it. We can't, we simply cannot do all of the things. We cannot maintain all of those, the possible programming if we want to get kids in the building.
Will teachers send homework packets for days not in school? How will the work be required and will the teachers be communicating, how will they be communicating this?
So I don't know that they'll be sending home packets. I mean, I'm sure if, if we, if there's a. Student that the teacher knows really well and they're like, oh, they would benefit from having some hands-on material on their. Opposite days or their distance learning days, I'm sure teachers will do that. But it will not be, there won't be, and I don't know how to, they won't have the structure or access to the teachers because the teachers. On the opposite day, the color days will be with the other cohort of students. Communication is the same through seesaw or email as the teachers are currently using.
I'm sorry, before you go on, it sounds to me like this question is about, is this required work? On those remote, on those distance learning days? I think you've covered this, right? That this is, these are. Experiential learning, you know, exercises and things like that. So it is required work, right? This is, this is important work. It's not busy work.
Correct.
Yes, applying their learning that they had before and stuff like that. Okay.
So a couple of questions in this one. What will a day feel like? Are they going to be able to move around, interact with each other? And then I think the last part, can temperatures be taken in the evening as well as temperatures are high versus morning when fevers are usually low?
So I'll answer the first part about interacting during the day. So one of the things that we're able to do because of cohort, for example, and these are again, guidelines from. New Hampshire Department of Health and Services is if your cohort of classes outside at recess, they can share the basketballs, they can share the kickball. What we need to be really focused on when we share materials is hand hygiene. So if we are in a class and we have three kids that are working on a science experiment. It is going to be imperative that they have their masks on and that they maintain six feet, but they may be touching the same materials. So what would happen is kids wash their hands really thoroughly. We're going to sing happy birthday twice before we do that to make sure our hands are clean. We're going to go over, we're going to be using similar materials. We're going to be sharing some math manipulatives. We're going to be, you know, using the same telescope, whatever it happens to be, right? And then as soon as you're done, we need to go over and wash our hands again, because ultimately what we're talking about is the droplets would be on their hands, which we've now sanitized and cleaned twice. So the issue, it is not the droplets on the hands, it's the hands going to the mouth. So the mask is on, the hands get washed, the hands get washed again. And then we're using the vital oxide on the materials. So certainly there will be plenty of collaboration and engagement. It will just look different for our students and I think that that's a really important, I'm glad this came up. I think that's an important reality for parents to think about. School will not be the same as it was a year ago. That's just the reality that the pandemic has caused at this time. There will be many parts that do feel the same, the connection to the teacher, the being in the space, the using all the asset masses resources. But the day-to-day interactions will look different, the, the way we flow and traffic in the building will look different. Those are things that are a reality right now. As unfortunate as they are, it is part of the considerations families should ponder as they make this decision.
Lilly, I don't know if you wanted to weigh in on the, the temperature, you know, evening and morning part?
I can. I, I feel like temperature is just one aspect of what we're asking for on the screening forms. So I, I honestly feel like whether it's taken at night or in the morning. What we're really asking is that day that the child is attending school. So the morning temperature at that point, but if your child had a fever the night before. They should have been coming to school in the morning, even if they're fever free in the morning.
Yeah, because you need at least 24 hours without that fever.
And at this point, you'd need the 10-1 rule or get a COVID test.
Will encore opportunities remain intact regardless of whether you return to school or stay remote?
Yes.
Let's see. So again, another question, can we have a list of the teachers that are staying remote before we take the survey? That's just not feasible. I mean, I. I understand people love their teachers, but we need a little bit of flexibility from the, you know, from the community to be able to put this in play. Otherwise, it just adds another degree of difficulty that is difficult to manage. Can a parent choose different options for each of their children?
Absolutely. The survey even articulates, please fill out a separate one for each child for that very reason.
Okay. Let's see. For families choosing remote option, will there be any opportunities similar to the current SEL sessions once those end?
So. We will do our very best to find opportunities for there to be some connections, some SEL activities, some in-person stuff. But that will not be the focus of our work for the next couple of weeks. The focus of our work will truly be getting the students back, those that are coming in person. And I articulate that I don't want to commit to the SEL looking similar to what it is right now. Because I don't believe it will be, but we will be looking for opportunities for classes to come together if they happen to be the remote option. Particularly outside.
So this one's noteworthy and I would agree with this. Someone who has a child in SMS and CMS, but the plan won't be presented to the joint board until next Tuesday. A decision for children can't be made until I hear the options for all children. Can we extend the timeline on the survey until Wednesday until after CMS school board meeting to allow for full information before we make a decision? Oh, Esther, go ahead.
Eric, I can speak to that. I, I can tell you that CMS and EHS. Are developing their plan with the same schedule, the blue and white schedule, alternating days and every other Friday, just for that exact reason. So there is some continuity for our elementary schools, our large ones that have to go alternating days, which is Lincoln Street, Main Street and, and Stratum.
The only, the only difference there would be the proposed start date.
Correct.
What extra support is Nurse Lilly getting, Nurse Lilly, I'm sorry, and their apologies, not just Nurse Lilly, but what, what extra support is SMS nurses getting? And, and is that factored into budget? I will say from a budget perspective, right, if there's a need there, we are covered. But I guess. The point, the point of the question is we, we called out bus monitors and custodial staff. Is there anything else that needs to be considered there?
So I think, you know, Nurse Kristen will be returning to Nurse Lilly and our health office will be fully intact. So we will have two, you know, full-time personnel in the health office. I think it's also important to mention again, we're at 50% capacity on every, any given day. And so we feel, and I think Lilly will probably agree, we feel confident with the support. Well, first of all, with the Lilly and Nurse Kristen's expertise, but also it truly is a team effort in the front office. I mean, everybody is constantly. In communication, supporting one another. The whole main office has been really in lockdown so that we can stay healthy in there and that we can be a team effort. So I think we feel really good about the personnel in the health office once Nurse Kristen returns to the partner in crime relationship.
All right. What does recess look like in winter or when it rains?
Yeah, rain is a whole nother level. So I think that goes back to like the third slide where we said, please bring weather appropriate clothes. So if it's sprinkling, we're going to have rain jackets and we're going to go outside. If it's torrential downpours, of course, that's not an option. And in winter, literally we go outside when it's snowing. We don't go outside if it's really, really cold. That's sort of, it's not a snowing issue. So I think we've talked about a few things and I don't have a perfect answer for that. What we have envisioned. On days where we have to remain inside is building a schedule where we can section off parts of the gym. For about 20 to 30 minutes where it would be about half the gym and classes while the recess wouldn't be piggybacked with their lunch. They would be able to go into the gym and sort of run around and get some wiggles out and play a few games. Because again, the cohorts would be between seven and 10 kids on half of the gym. So that is our plan right now. It is certainly not ideal, but we understand that kids. That are not going to benefit from sitting in their classroom for the entire six hours.
Will teachers stay in the same grade level?
We hope so. And I know that's such a hard question, you know, I think. We recognize that the more things that we can keep in place that kids are used to, the better, the same for our teachers. The teachers have. Again, undertaken a huge responsibility and it, you know, we want to be as fair to them as we are trying to be to our kids and our families. And that consistency of understanding the grade level, knowing the material, feeling confident and not having to shift is important. But I also think our staff recognizes that there is potential for that based on the numbers.
There's a, what, what will be the threshold in positive cases that would cause us to go back to full remote learning? I would refer you to nh.gov/covid19. There's a whole resource guideline in there as including a matrix. So if you want to do a quick Google search, it's DHS return to school. And we'll show you what the DHS guidance is that the district is following. There was a question about how can Swayze go back to school five days, but we can't. Very simple, it's a space issue, right? Related arts one, we already answered. Provide a link to the recording when we send the survey. If I'm not mistaken, Esther, is this the, the meeting posted? On the. SE website when it's done?
Yes, it usually, usually takes today, today took about half a day for our tech department to do what it needed to do to get it up. So I anticipated it'll be up tomorrow sometime under that, go to school, go to the school website. Go to school board where you found the posting and it'll be in there as meeting minutes of recording.
I think I've seen this question twice, but I'll bring it up. Is there flexibility in the days a child goes Monday, Wednesday or Tuesday, Thursday, based on class size and availability? The answer is no, it's based on alphabet and that's intended to be consistent across the district for families. This question around here, why? Why can't we have the option to let kids be remote with an in-person teacher? I think there, there's two answers to that. One is a privacy statute from the state. There's RSA that prohibits us from broadcasting. You know, from the, inside the school with, with children. The other part is it's a contractual issue from teachers union that we are not. Going to have our teachers trying to teach remote and in person at the same time, because that's just not fair to them either. I don't know if Kate or Esther, you want to add anything on to that? All right. If there was a snow day, which we, we don't have those anymore. Would remote children also have a snow day?
My assumption would be, and that's a great question, we haven't hashed it out. I guess that was something we'd have to talk about, but ultimately we really don't have snow days anymore. So my assumption would be if it was a snow day. We would just turn it into a remote day, but Esther, I don't know if that's been talked about at the negotiations table. That's something we should absolutely bring forward to get a better answer for the community around.
All right, they, they win the question of the day so far. So I, I think I'll lump these together as a couple of them that I've seen. Concerned about the lack of structure for the days the students are not doing in-person learning, what is expected of working parents? You know, for those kids who will not be returning to school, actually is a different question. So we'll, we'll take, split those. What is expected of the parents on those days that? What is expected of the parents on those days that their students are not in school in an in-person collection?
I guess if I'm understanding the question properly, that's ultimately up to the the family. I think it will probably vary by family. I think we have some families right now that have hired childcare. We have some that have chosen to enroll their students in, you know, a Y program for a day. I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't have expectations of families on those days. I think we want the families to do whatever works best for them. And and I think we want to try to be as, you know, flexible and supportive as we can. But I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all for our families around what those days will look like for distance learning days.
And so there's a question here about the school day being shorter, students not returning the regular eight, 10 to 3:00 PM schedule. You know, there's a question around, aren't they required to have a set number of hours in education per year? And I would look to Esther on that, you know, what is the instructional hour guidance from the state, given we're in a pandemic?
Yep, given we're in a pandemic, those distant learning days count as school hours. So we would meet the requirement.
Now we're starting to turn fairly negative. Let me pick through some of the rest of these that are worth responding to. Here to come back and reread that one. On, okay, so on in-person days, can students buy lunch? And maybe we can just talk about that real quick and I'll read through a couple of the other ones.
So we are, Ann Walsh has been in contact with the state about this. Because it does change depending on whether we have remote or in-person. And what it looks like we'll be doing is we will be providing lunch for students on those days, but it'll be a brown bag, like a bag lunch, because we obviously have, can't be accessing the cafeteria and kids will be in their rooms. So ultimately, we will be providing lunch and it is free. The US Department of Agriculture extended that waiver all the way to the end of the school year. So the lunch is free to our students. For those that are remote, they would still have the opportunity to pick up twice a week. And then for those that are in the building, it would be a bag lunch each day.
Thank you. If you choose in-person in the cases, go up in the town, you feel uncomfortable with exposure, are you allowed to switch at that point?
So I mean, my feeling would be is that it would behoove all of us to have a really clear idea of what the state's guidance is going to be on whether schools go remote or stay in person. I believe it's a, and Esther, correct me if I'm wrong, it's by county and it's a 5% positive testing rate would then determine if we would be going into the red zone, which would potentially lead to school closure. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's quite a matrix. That's that's right involved in that web address that Eric gave out. So there's a different couple of matrices that we can use and, you know, we can, if the governor says, obviously, by county, then we don't have a choice or by state. But other than that, we're going to try to use that matrix that Eric referred to, to work through our particular schools.
And if I'm not mistaken, that is, it is on the SAU website and under Return to School?
It is.
There is, in one of the updates, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think in one of the more recent ones, I have, I have the actual sheet here.
It was a Saturday release. I know that. It was nice.
Came out September 1st and it looks like this. And it says on the top Bureau of Infection Disease Control. So I know Dave put a link to that and it is in our, on our webpage in one of his messages. And I think I want to say this came out on September 1st, so it would be in his September messages that that was included. And I think you're right, Eric, that was in a Saturday release.
Eric, can we go back to this one at 7:27? Are we going to say something, Sarah, about the same subject? Or are we going to just say the same thing? Okay.
I would, yeah, I would like to go back to the question that says if a family chooses remote learning for their child, will that child be in the class with the teacher every day? Or will they also be doing the five days with a teacher and five days self-directed learning? I think this is a really important question because it needs to be clarified before parents make decisions. Really, what we're talking about is you're going to have one cohort of children that choose to go in person that are really, they're going to essentially be getting 50%.
In person.
In person and 50% curriculum. And the kids that go remote are getting five days of instruction. So.
Every week.
Week, there's.
So they don't have those self-directed days in between. Yep. And the other question that I would piggyback or add to that, Sarah, too, because I think that's one of the things I've been struggling with is this idea of because of alternating days, it is, is it a reduction? No question. I don't want to, I don't want to sugarcoat that. I also believe firmly that when you're in a class of seven or eight students, it is a very different education if you're one of 18 or 19. And that's not to say the teachers aren't awesome in either environment. But we all know that education truly comes down to that small group, one-on-one interaction with your teacher, right? That's the best. It's individualized. It's responsive to each child's needs. And when a classroom teacher is engaging with seven or eight kids for six hours a day, it's pretty darn close to two full days with 18 kids, if not more. And so I do want to help. I think that that's a, if, as a parent, that would be something that would be important to me. And so I, and when I'm thinking about these options and this planning, I am not just thinking about it as the principle of SMS. I'm thinking about as a parent. And I do believe that those opportunities for small group in-person instruction with their highly qualified teacher that they trust are valuable, quality days that do amount to more than just those six hours if we had 18 children in the classroom. So, but I do think it's important to mention that the coverage of curriculum is certainly reduced.
Yeah, and and research obviously backs exactly what you're saying, but there's only so much that a teacher.
Can do.
Can deliver in six hours, right?
And the child needs to process. The child needs lots of time to process all that information.
One more thing, more and more, yeah. You're right, Kate. You're right.
Are we good, are we good with that one, Sarah and Cheryl?
Yep.
I, that was my, I just really felt like that was the most important thing that we really need to clarify between those two choices.
Transportation, if transportation change, yeah, try that again. Transportation needs change. Will there be an option to access the buses?
I would certainly want to be able to provide that for families. I think that that's constantly a fluid thing for many families, especially as we know jobs are changing and schedules are changing. And I don't mean I could, you could tell me at four o'clock on a Tuesday and I would have it ready for Wednesday morning, but we would certainly want to incorporate the option for more if that was necessary. Absolutely.
There's a question here in terms of what was the reason behind waiting till March to reevaluate? And part of it was it's after the holidays, right? It's sort of, you know, turning towards when weather gets nicer and we have more outdoor spaces, again, potentially. I don't know if you want to add a little bit more color to that?
I think it's also really disruptive. And I think we need to offer an opportunity for our kids and our teachers to get in a rhythm, to offer some really quality, engaging, deep learning. And that, in my mind, that provides a good opportunity for that, a length of time that's that's opportune. I also think it gives us time. I mean, realistically, as we know, November and December are very short for instructional days. But it gives us time to gather more data, see what's working, what's not working. Is this sustainable for our students? Is it sustainable for our staff? It gives us an accurate, a time for a full picture before we might have to adjust.
So if enough students chose remote, would full-time in-person be an option?
So here's, that's, that's a great question. Here's what I would like to say. If it was binding, sure. But what I envision is, say, we had 80% of our parents respond that their children are choosing remote. And then I said, oh, great. Well, now we have 20%. We're going to offer five full days. Every parent that chose, well, not every parent, a good percentage of parents that chose remote would say, well, no, I want that because now it's five full days. And that's part of why that binding, this is a binding agreement, because we have to be able to build a plan that we can sustain for a certain duration of time. So unfortunately, that would not be an adjustment we would be able to make. I don't believe. I hate saying no because I hate being the person who's like, nope, absolutely not. Because I try to remain open. I just don't ever foresee that being an option that we could actually pull off and truly sustain.
At a recent, one of the last joint board meetings, Dr. Ryan mentioned schools doing random COVID testing. Is that going to be happening in SMS?
I can speak to that if you'd like me to. Right now, the the surveillance testing that's available to us based on the amount of testing the lab at Exeter Hospital can handle, we were told is 10 tests a day. That's across SAU 16. We are doing that and piloting that idea. Obviously, 10 tests a day doesn't help with what we, what we hoped would be the influence of doing that kind of testing. It's more like 10% in each school every day, random. So we're continuing to work with Dr. Johnson, our liaison, and explore those options. Part of it depends on labs and I know Nurse Lily, you might have more to add on this topic.
Yeah, I honestly think that that's still in the development phases from what I've gathered from the meetings that I've had with the nurses and with Helen and Ellen. So at this time, I, there's not much I can speak to that, except that they are, I believe, planning it, but it's a pretty small number. So, and hope that, I think the hope is to get, get it to be more of a surveillance type testing, which is a little tougher to do with the amount of capacity I think that the lab can actually handle is what I understand from that.
So two, one and sort of the same question, but there's two questions here. What is the basis for six feet in masks at the same time? Which I think is a CDC and Department of Health guideline. And if plexiglass was an extra layer of protection, why aren't we implementing it? That also, I'd feel much better about my child taking their mask off to eat lunch if plexiglass was in place.
So I would go back to that we're following the guidelines that were suggested by the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services. And we're following those guidelines and trying not to make individual decisions that veer from that. And their recommendations for lunchtime is that students remain six feet apart, students face the same direction. We have Julie Curry, our speech pathologist, has been working with Nurse Lily to create sort of a social story for all of our students that we can share with them and often review on proper procedures, like how you take your mask off, it goes in a bag, how you put your mask on, just those things. So again, we're following those procedures. The extra layers of protection are, for example, if one of them couldn't be met, meaning if we couldn't maintain six feet, then we would potentially use a plexiglass barrier or something like that. They are not intended, you don't, the, the recommendation is not to have additional layers beyond those that we are abiding by.
Are you going to have extra help with the kids when they're on recess? I see issues with kids from different classes that know each other, trying to hang out when they see each other on the field.
So we'll have plenty of recess duty. We have a staff that will be outside with our kids. And to be honest with you, our experience so far with CCC, kids want to do what's right. Kids want to follow the rules because 99% of them are motivated to do that naturally. We're certainly having to do a lot of reminding and a lot of practice. But I don't, I feel like every day at school, whether when the pandemic or not, most kids want to do, follow the rules. Most kids want to do it right. And as long as we're there to sort of remind and and practice and have discussions, I think we'll be okay.
Is there, so I think, again, I think this sort of goes hand in hand, is there a chance that a remote teacher will be a para? Also, if a teacher is quarantined from traveling, how will the class be covered?
So we have a couple of ways we're going to be able to do that. So if a teacher has to quarantine for any reason, whether it's travel, whether it's a, you know, a child, that's whatever it happens to be. The, we, they can certainly join the class remotely. So the class could, the continued, kids could continue to come to school on those days. We would have an ESP in the room with those students facilitate, but the teacher would be remoting in to provide the direct instruction and the planning and facilitating that way.
And the remote teacher otherwise would not be a para, would be a classroom certified teacher.
I'm sorry, thank you, Kate.
It was just in two parts. I couldn't tell which.
Would it be possible to have a teacher or aide guiding the off days to maintain structure?
We don't have the staff to do that. We would need twice the staff.
Question here about recording being available. Yes, it will be posted sometime tomorrow. Is the attendance and work done on the distance days counting towards a child's grades?
So is it, so our hope is when we think about it this way, it's really the, I guess we would consider it sort of like a flipped classroom, like the activities they could potentially engage in to prepare for when they do return. And certainly, extension activities. We have days where it might be this student really needs to practice this or that student needs to, you know, work on some goal setting or finish up this part of this assignment or this task. Or we're asking them to maybe do their eye-ready benchmark assessment or something of that nature. I think it's really going to be, you know, certainly a culmination of all the tasks and learning activities that they participate in throughout the year, whether it's in-person or not, that are going to feed into our assessment of their skills. I mean, we are a competency-based school and a competency-based learning entire SAU. So in terms of the way things used to be done, where it was, you know, participation is 10% and homework is 10%, that's not the way we assess students. We assess students on their progress towards skill and knowledge development, and that would remain the same.
So is there, are there any examples of other SAU suggesting this type of, you know, in-person, five days and five days remote hybrid model? I mean, I know it's being proposed for, it sounds like for Exeter Elementary, CMS and the high school. Are there other districts that are doing a similar model, Esther?
Yes, there, there are other districts doing, it's not exactly alternating days. Some are doing two days back-to-back, flex day, but there are many models out there that people are kind of mixing the remote and the in-person days, mostly because of space issues, just like we're facing. So are the lot, it's usually the larger, just looks like a Manchester's, I think, considering to moving to that versus Pinkerton that had a cluster and now they've had to go all remote until the end of October. So it really depends on the district and day to day.
I understand flexibility need for teachers, but is there going to be a starting point trying to keep teachers with students when possible? See Caitlin nodding her head saying yes.
Yes.
I guess I need.
Kate, they're asking, you know, when we start to rebuild rosters, the goal is to keep consistency for everybody we can.
Oh, absolutely. So if, I mean, certainly, I mean, that would, that's our goal because it's best for kids and teachers. But again, that's part of why we add the three levels to the survey question, to really try to influence, you know, to inform those as best as possible.
See, so there was a question about trying to accommodate pods, which I said, I think we said, no, that was not feasible considering what we're trying to do. Do you or will you require in-person students to receive a flu shot?
We have never required that and I don't believe that that's on anybody's agenda at this time.
I believe that. Well, I think that comes from Massachusetts mandating that as of the end of the year. Extra money left over used to purchase tents for outside for use of rainy days?
So we did explore renting tents and purchasing tents. We did purchase small six of the easy pop-up tents for the fall. Because we did have a number of families that were comfortable with their children coming here for services, but they preferred them to be outside. Or staff members that prefer to be outside and it's beautiful outside. So we do have a number of those, but we also looked into renting tents and it's an extremely expensive endeavor and they're very limited at this time because they're often already pre-reserved. But we did talk about, and part of that March review will be, you know, how do we increase our abilities to be outside for learning? And that would potentially involve some tents.
So it's a question about building ventilation, but those, those units have already been installed at this point in time.
Correct.
Can kids achieve skills to move to the next grade in half of the school days?
So I think that's a really important question and something for parents to consider. We have asked all of the staff in the building to really think about their curriculum in two different ways. First, in any year, we truly have to look at what is most essential of all the competencies that we intend to cover in any, in any year. What are truly the most essential foundational? When you think about a competency and you think about the number of ICAN statements, there might be eight and you're saying, okay, these are the four that are absolutely most essential for most students. There's always going to be some variation, some outliers. So that's the number one thing that all of our teachers are having to do right now is to really pare down to like, what is, what is truly going to be the most important for our children? The second thing is our teachers are truly looking at how we do interdisciplinary teaching. So that when we're, you know, kids get most excited about science and social studies and granted, there's a few math nerds like myself that love math. But for most kids, it's science and social studies. And so, and often you, you hear in schools that those are the first things to go, but we understand that that's truly what engages our kids. So how do we teach literacy within those content areas rather than keeping it separate? How can we truly look at teaching, you know, nonfiction writing through our science? How might we teach historical fiction? How might we teach historical fiction writing through our history? And really, that's how we can attempt to cover as much as possible, and when I say cover, I even hate that word, to teach and have our children's, you know, children master those skills as much as possible between now and June. You know, we're going to continue with our benchmarking assessments, which is Fontis and Pennell for Literacy and I-ready for math, so that we can look at those students that do need intervention and provide those for the students, so that they aren't falling behind what we would consider a grade level.
Are we looking at long-term solutions to get more space? I think we sort of touched upon that. It's not something that I think where it's going to be solved that quickly. But yeah, I think for the spring, we were talking about just trying to use any space that we can. There's a question around how electives can be taught remote and in-person simultaneously with a teacher, but a teacher can't teach that way. I think it has to do, Kate, if you had mentioned previously, we're not going to be sending in-person students into that, into a elective, or excuse me, into one of those situations, right? It's going to be all remote, where that instruction is going to be with nobody in the classroom.
Correct.
So yeah, I think this is another clarification point. Will parents who choose to do remote learning have a full five-day week of school, unlike children attending in-person?
So I think the clearest way to say that is if a family chooses remote for their child, it will be identical to what they're currently experiencing, which is 9:10 to 2:15, it may go to 2:30, but it's the same timeframe, 15 minutes, five days a week. I should have had a soda.
So, you know, another, I think this is going to be a difficult answer, but if final survey comes back that 50% of parents want to do remote and 50% want to do in-person, will that allow in-person to not have to do red, blue-white days, right? And would we be able to go full-time for those who are in-person? I think the answer is, we don't know yet, right? It's a numbers game, right? And it probably would have to be more heavily weighted towards more people chose remote versus in-person.
So I think the dilemma for me is, if we could, I believe some families that choose remote after today will choose remote because they want their child to have a five-day experience. They do not want their children to have alternating days, which include distance learning. If we then.
Can't accommodate it, or they can't accommodate it, right?
Right, for whatever reason, right? So they're just, they're choosing that option. I believe there would be genuine and justifiable frustration if all of a sudden then we flipped it and said, well, because we only had 50% that want to return in-person, now we're offering that. Because I think there's a percentage of those families that don't say, well, hold on. The reason we didn't choose that is because it wasn't an option. And again, I go back to, we are asking parents to understand that this survey is a binding agreement, which means we are moving forward, assuming the board votes tonight to support this in-person plan with the plan that was proposed tonight. And I understand that there's some frustration around that. I want to articulate my compassion for the position that everybody's in right now. It is not easy. This pandemic has put all of us in really compromised situations, and I know how hard it is to make these decisions. And I can't articulate enough how much I have appreciated the emails and the phone calls of support from families, even though they're not thrilled about any of our options. They have been deeply appreciative of what has been presented and what continues to be presented for their children. So I don't want to come off that sounding like I don't have compassion. I do. And I feel like we're working really hard to present a plan that we feel is best for our children in the current circumstance.
Been a recent trend of internet outages during weather events. What's the protocol for a student when that happens?
I don't, there's nothing I can do if there's no Wi-Fi or no power.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's just, that's our, those are our snow days, is what it really translates to.
It's unfortunate and it's frustrating. I experience it, you know, daily, but I can't control that.
So a couple of questions here, I think were already answered and certainly can be re-reviewed. Follow-up, students are going from a seven-hour day to a five-hour school day regardless of remote or in-person. This does not meet the 945 hours of instruction per year. Esther, I don't know if you want to weigh in on how the state is viewing this. I mean, again, I stress, this is a pandemic, right? This isn't, you know, our go-forward strategy for the next 10 years, right? This is until, you know, we can get to a more normal state. So I think there are some exceptions being made, but Esther, maybe you can speak to what the Board of Education is stating on it.
Again, I think they're, all the way from the governor to the Board of Education to the commissioner, they're encouraging us to try and get kids back as much as we can, following CDC guidelines. And that, that's individual to each school in each district, based on the factors we've talked about tonight. So they're offering ideas and support, but they know that we have to meet the individuality of the circumstance and the changes that come at us every day.
All right. So, you know, why have students spent the past month getting to know their teacher instead of more academics? Since many will have a new teacher, students are going to start over and seeing kids are going through getting, getting out of the school year, we've been flexible, realize it's tough decisions, but it's baffling. We are having this meeting in October. It seems like we're wasting so much time this year. Can we get a grade 13? Because it seems like a loss. Again, I would just ask the community, I understand you're frustrated, but, you know, I think this is the wrong place to be taking out your frustrations. If we could wave a wand and fix it, we would. But, you know, we are pretty much restricted in terms of what we can do based on what the state is telling us, what our health providers are telling us. If you've got magical pixie dusts or better answers, please feel free to speak up and help us out. But I mean, I think what you're seeing here is a well-thought-out plan that takes into account the needs of everyone as much as possible. The only thing I can say with certainty is no plan will be universally liked by everyone. Everyone will find a flaw in everything that we're doing, and it will be expressed every which way. But I would ask for, again, a little bit of compassion and understanding as we go through this. And certainly, everyone has their challenges and their opinions, and will make their decisions. And we just, that we respect each other's decisions. Let's see. Another question about pulling students out if they don't feel comfortable. I mean, again, I think it's intended to be binding, that, you know, if you're uncomfortable with where, actually, I'll defer this one to Kate, right? But if a parent selects to go in-person, well, they need to commit to keeping their child in school until SMS goes entirely remote based on testing rates, meaning parents cannot pull their children out just because they're uncomfortable with the current rates and hasn't passed that rate limit to make them go all remote. And I guess you can pull your student, but you can't just put them in a remote classroom is effectively what it comes down to.
Correct.
Go ahead, Krista.
Just to make this clear, at any point in time, a parent can pull their child to homeschool their child. So that is every parent's choice. It isn't, we are not offering the choice within this plan to come out of in-school to go into remote at the parent's choosing. I just want to clarify that and make sure that's correct, right, Kate?
It is. Yes, thank you, Krista.
There's a question about the alternating days. Why not do Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, Thursday, and alternate Fridays versus doing the Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday? I don't know, Esther, if there was any rhyme or reason to that selection. I just know it's supposed to be consistent across the SAU.
I can answer that. It is, if, for those students that will be receiving in-person, if we did it that way, they would go significant stretches of time with no contact with their teachers or their classmates. And to avoid that, we chose to do the alternating days. So for example, if a student was Monday, Tuesday, that means they would have no interaction with their classmates or their teachers Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday until the following Monday. And so this at least offers less days in-between, which for our youngest learners, the research supports that the more frequent and shorter bursts, the better.
What measures are in place to ensure that the two programs, in-person and full-time remote, are comparable? How will we be measuring this over time? And what do we plan on, and do we plan on making adjustments to the program to better ensure comparability?
I don't know that there, I guess I think about, if we weren't in this environment, we offer a lot of autonomy to our teachers and the way that they deliver and respond to students, because we want it to be individualized and personalized. That being said, our teachers are held accountable to the same competencies and the same grade spans with the same I-can statements. So those are the ways in which we measure our students' progress and their learning. And those are the conversations, you know, we have. I think we have to go back to a little bit about what Sarah had mentioned earlier, and I know Cheryl had mentioned it as well. A remote experience is five days a week with a teacher, every-day structure, and in-person is not. And so there are going to be differences between the two experiences. And as much as I wish that wasn't true, that is the reality that we will be facing. Again, I guess one other thing I would add to that is that we do have a number of staff that work in terms of intervention, and whether that's an SEL intervention, whether that's a math intervention, or whether that's a literacy intervention. And all of our students, if, whether they are remote or in-person, based on their benchmark assessments, have access to those interventionists and getting that additional support, and that remains in place this year. So we will continue to use that data to determine which students need additional support to make the progress that we would hope that they would be making.
Kate, and I would add the pieces that we have in place, our child study team meetings, things like that are still up and running regularly. So teachers who are comfortable, as many are, with their grade level and the expectations for this time in the year, are bringing students forward that they're concerned about, so that we can organize those tiered supports for any student that needs it.
And KP, I have to say, every time you speak, it's soothing because there's crickets in the background.
I'll just unmute.
See, so we're starting to get into a bunch of duplicate questions and some things that were missed. So I apologize if I haven't answered some of your questions. Again, I would refer you back to the first, the part of the presentation covered a lot of it, but also there's pieces that we've already sort of answered. One of the separate ones, if a child has an IEP, will they go to school every day?
So those students who, in September during the IP team meeting, if they, if it was determined that they received services five days a week, they would still remain receiving services five days a week. So they might not be coming for the whole day, but they would be coming for a portion of their services, a portion of the day which would be their services.
Will kids be assessed differently this year than they have in the past in terms of readiness to move to the next grade? Are the checks in place to make sure that children have achieved the same knowledge and skill levels? And I guess the other question I would sort of add on to this is, you know, what happens to our standardized tests next year when we, you know, go back to school? Has anyone thought about that? And obviously, that may be outside of our controls.
The state will tell us. I mean, ultimately, that's what will happen. The state will determine those, that. And the DOE will let any, you know, SAUs and districts know what their plan is for the standardized state testing.
Esther, from a district level, are we starting to say something to the state about this?
The state recently wanted us to do interim assessments for the commissioner, and that's actually not part of the law. And so we, as superintendents, got together and wrote a letter to the commissioner about his expansion of the emergency order to have schools do the assessment. So we're working through that. We, there's a window, and we haven't heard back yet. What the commissioner thought of that letter from the Southeasters Association. We obviously don't feel that the interim assessment should be a mandated piece. They're not the state mandate test that happens in the spring. I anticipate the same thing will happen in the spring, that we'll get mandated to take that, and then we'll take the next steps and confer with colleagues and see what seems to be the best course of action.
School board ultimately has the decision of when we go back to school, whether we go back to school and when, how does the weight of that vote weigh in what our parents are choosing? You know, I think from a school board perspective, I'll take a pass at it, but I would ask the school board members to sort of weigh in. You know, one of the board goals is to get students back into school. It was one of the main things that we've been trying to work towards for the past three months, actually, longer than that, since May. So I really appreciate what the district and the SAU has done, and I apologize for my dog squealing in the background, but apparently someone got home. I would just say that, you know, we are supporting the district and the administrative staff with what their needs are. And I don't know if anyone else wants to add to that.
I'll add, when we took the original vote on what, whether to open in September remotely, the big issue for me was we didn't have enough staff at that time to accommodate our students. So remote was the best option, and I know we also had other materials issues that hadn't been received, installed, that were on order, et cetera. So there was that as well, but not having the teachers in place where we needed them definitely made the decision, I won't say easy, but it certainly left it with very few options. We've resolved a lot of that, and now that we have enough teachers to accommodate our students with a plan that is not perfect, whether you're remote or whether you are in-person. But that's what we're dealing with right now. I feel having options and giving parents choice is probably the best thing to do.
Anyone else from the board want to speak to that? If we have additional questions that pop up or could influence our decision, who should we direct them to? Kate, is that?
That's me, please. Kate Blinder is like pointing at me like, don't even think about sending them my way. No, please reach out. I'd be happy to talk to anybody and answer any questions that I possibly can.
I think, do you want to address this one at 8:50?
Well, there's one that was, you know, I think this is a fringe use case, but if we elect to keep a teacher priority for each of our children, one ends up remote and the other ends up in-person, would there be a chance to move them so they're both the same?
I would want, if we could, I would want to entertain that. I mean, I think that that's a significant burden to put on families if they were truly different and they didn't want different for their children. So I would certainly be open to that, because I understand that.
When would we expect to know who our child's teacher will be?
Sure. So part of the reason we're asking for the survey to be completed by the 19th is so that we would have that week to figure it all out. Literally, our plan is that 19th to the 23rd to really be able to look at all of the survey results, look at potential changes that need to happen, figure out who was remote and who was in-person, and that we can communicate to families potentially as early as Monday, the 26th of October would be ideal for us. I've seen a couple of questions about what I mean by alternating Fridays. So what I mean is that, so if it's week one, and it was, say, blue groups, it would be, the blue group would be Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Does that make sense? And then the week two, white group would be Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So it's that idea that every other week, your child is in on Fridays.
I was trying to, and I know, Kate Blinder, there was a response in there around the math associated with the hours. I don't know, I was, I looked for a couple of unique questions. I don't know if you want to sort of answer that.
Because just looking at the day and thinking, the day's about five and a quarter hours or so. So if we're looking at five and a quarter hours times 180, we do hit the 9:45 for elementary. I know it's more for middle school. That's initially some of the thinking we were doing around calculating the day. I don't know if that helps.
So I think one of the feedback pieces I'm seeing here, it's fairly consistent, the design of the in-person days where, of the return-to-school students on their non-school days will greatly impact how people respond. And that, I think the general consensus that I'm seeing here is that people are looking for a little bit more direction in terms of what is expected and what would be provided. what is expected and what would be provided, you know, for the students to be working on.
I don't know that I can give people more than they're asking for right now. So there will be a series of activities and learning tasks that are associated and aligned to the curriculum. But there will be a variety of choice, yes, similar to the learning menus that were provided in the spring. But if parents are looking for like a breakdown of the day, I can't provide that. That would be something that would be family specific.
The child is having, go ahead, Chris.
It just, it sounds like that that the community is seeking more answers on the for the days they would get non-instructional learning. And I think what we don't have, there aren't a lot of answers. And I think that if it's not answered at this point, parents are going to have to take a lot of accountability at this point because their child, at the end game, like Sarah said, will only get two and a half days of instructional learning. So if they're seeking beyond that, it's not going to, we're not going to be able to provide it at this point in time. Is that correct? Like, I feel like I'm, we're just to reiterate that, like, if they're seeking direct instructional learning, that's not going to happen beyond those two point five days.
They will not be receiving direct instruction from their teacher during the distance learning days. That is accurate.
Okay, so no, there's no way we ask or we shape this. Is that is that a negotiable? Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
If a child is having problems during in-person learning, will there be a counselor available?
Yep, absolutely. We still have in place. So we have, we have currently right now one point four school counselors. Jesse Caldwell is here Monday through Friday, so she's available. Tiffany Green, who is our social worker, is also available four days a week. Diane Griffith, another school counselor, is here two days a week. And we do have our Zen Zen up and running for those students that still need some regulation space and and resources and materials.
For identified students who currently attend CCC, will they still receive all IEP services outlined from their meetings when they are not no longer attending? CCC, because it's ending on October thirtieth, those services were based on them being in the building five days a week.
So students that receive five days a week service will still receive their services five days a week.
I'm not sure if the dog was really excited about the plan. She was excited that everyone got home. How normal will school day look? Kids doing morning announcements, principal readily available? How will going to the bathroom look, et cetera? Can you tell us more about the bucket idea?
So the day will look similar in the sense of, you know, morning meeting, instructional time. Some of our classrooms have bathrooms in the room. For those students that'll be using the hall bathrooms, there will be, so one of the things we had learned from Brentwood is they put decals on the floor outside the bathroom. So they're six feet apart because only one student should go in the bathroom at a time. Again, they'll have their mascars on, the hygiene, but that would be the the bathroom protocol. And the bathrooms are cleaned three times a day. There was other questions about that. Yes, the administration is in the building every day. We don't have a home base. Right now, we're working out of the art room. Because again, we had to create space for the administrative assistants, but we are in the building every day. And that was there another part, Eric, that I may have forgotten?
The bucket idea.
Yeah, so this actually came, we learned about it. And one of our parents has a kindergartner at Portsmouth Elementary School, and their kindergarten kids are going half-days. And they asked each student to bring a bucket. So the bucket stays at school, but what they do is they can keep a clipboard in there, they can keep some writing utensils, some paper, some and then it's easy for a teacher to say, okay, we're just going to go outside. It's beautiful. We're going to be able to do our math outside, or we're going to take a walk, or we're going to do some writing. They automatically grab their bucket, they go outside, they have a stool, and they have their materials with them. And one of the things that they had said at Portsmouth, it really helps them maintain the six feet because when kids feel like, oh, now I have a sort of a marked location, it's sort of a provides the boundary, which is really nice. And those can be, they're waterproof, number one, but they're also easy to clean.
We shared the parent survey results. Are we planning on sharing the teacher survey results?
I don't know what teacher survey results they're talking about. I didn't survey.
We're back from August, and I'm not sure how relevant they would be at this point.
Then they're not relevant at this point.
Yeah. Again, are we allowed to ask our teacher if they plan on being remote full-time? Again, no.
No, the teachers don't know.
Quite frankly, yeah. Will attendance be taken during distance learning days for those days? Those days at home for an in-person student? The answer is no, right? They're they're free to do what they're doing on their own accord during those days.
I think one of the things we're hoping to, you know, evolve over the time, and one of the things I'm hearing from 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 just the conversation, and I don't have the chat box open because I feel like it'll be distracting. So I don't really know the actual questions unless you're sharing it, Eric. But I do think I've heard enough about what do those distance learning days look like? And we certainly are not putting the expectation, again, that it's going to look like a remote day, but I certainly think we're open to figuring out other ways to grow that and think about how what those days will look like or what tasks we can offer for students. But I think it's paramount to mention, it is not engaging with the teacher. The teacher is not available. And so I think that that's at the heart of that. So whatever we do present for, you know, learning tasks or accountability or attendance is really ultimately a decision made by the parent and the child because the teachers are not available to facilitate the day.
All right. It's hard to believe, but we made it to the bottom of the list. So I guess I'll look to the board. Any other thoughts, questions, concerns, anything that hasn't been discussed? And I'll sort of give a two-minute warning to those who are putting questions in, because I think we'll look to sort of wrap up the chat session here in a few.
Yeah, Kate, I hate to even ask you another single question, but thinking about, you know, we've had some challenges with finding staff, especially for ESPs and other substitutes. What's your thought on the the bus monitors?
I don't have an answer. I guess my feeling is it's worth putting it out there and seeing what's available because I really believe it's an important part of it. But I can, I can share that we have had a posting for an ESP for well over twelve weeks. We have interviewed anybody and everybody that has applied. We offered four positions and all four said, no, thank you. I think it's such an uncertain time, and that's, you know, intimidating for people. Less than a week and a half ago, Kate was doing another interview, and we found out the person was in Thailand. So again, like, it's, yeah, that face, that's how we feel pretty regularly. So as much as I would love to say, yes, they're going to be people because, you know, unemployment is high and so on and so forth. I think a lot of people are weighing their decision about the safety of the job and what it entails. And I don't, I honestly don't know what we'll find, Sarah. I'm just hoping we'll have some luck.
Yeah, I hope so, too. And the additional custodial staff, that makes sense to me. In the event that we do go remote, I mean, how secure is that position? Is this for the rest of the year? Or if we're a person, this person has a job, how do we?
Yeah, I think we'd have to, we'd potentially be looking at a one-year contract. And I think all of the contracts that we have been issuing since since spring have had sort of a a clause in that that say dependent on workload. And I think that would be the same for the custodian because certainly if we were all remote, if that was if that was the unfortunate case, then we would not have the need for for that additional custodian. And they would be, you know, furloughed or potentially let go depending on where we were in the year.
Thank you.
All right. So I think that wraps up the the chat session. Thank you very much for everyone who participated. In terms of next steps, and just going to look to Esther, right? I mean, we need a board vote in terms of, you know, whether or not we are going to support this. So I'll look to the board, you know, do we have a motion to accept the presentation, the return to school presentation that the district that Kate and team have provided?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, so a motion by Chris, a second by Aaron. Any further questions or concerns on this before we take a vote? I'm just going to say, you know, thank you to everyone who has put the time and effort in this. I know it has not been easy. I know it's been difficult to sort of pin this down. I think this is, it's a challenging plan, but I think it's a it's a great start. And it's ultimately, you know, it doesn't solve the needs of everyone, but at least it's a step in the right direction in terms of trying to get people back into school. And I'll just, I'll leave it at that. So with that, so we've got a motion and a second, we'll do a roll call vote. So if you're in favor, say yes. If you're not, say no, abstention. So I'll sort of go through. Cheryl, you're first on my list now.
Yes.
Okay, Erin?
Yes.
Carissa?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And mine is a yes as well. All right. So I guess the only other question that comes along with it, right? There's a, you know, additional financial, you know, pieces that are required. So if I'm not mistaken, that number was about a hundred and two thousand dollars, if I'm research free correctly. I would like to make a motion to enable the school district to spend up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars to support the back-to-school initiative related to COVID-related expenses. Well, I'll put that motion, do we have a second? Before we have a conversation on?
Do you want to be more specific about because it's about, it's about people?
I mean, I think make the motion to be for bus monitors and custodial staff. I just don't want to limit it to just those two things. So I'll make, I'll clarify my motion. I'll make a motion to support the the back-to-school, the return to school initiative through the hiring of additional bus monitors and custodial staff up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, so second by Cheryl. Any conversation on that? And again, I know it's a hundred and two, but that leaves a little bit of room for flexibility so that you're not having to come to us because it's a hundred and two thousand dollars and one cent, right? So roll call vote. Again, Cheryl, you're on top.
I.
Erin?
I.
Chris?
I.
Sarah?
I.
And I'm an I as well. So getting back to, I think Molly's question of do we need to open up, you know, last year's budget? You know, based on where we were by my rough and tough calculations, I think we had alleviated about three hundred thousand dollars worth of anticipated expenses through prepaying items from last year's budget as well as, you know, just some other shifts within the staffing model for this year. I don't, I personally don't believe we need to reopen it. I'll look to the board if there's any concern from a financial perspective, but given where we are in the budget that we have in place, I would rather return the surplus to the town to offset taxes because that is something I have seen people asking about. But I also believe that we're in a sound financial place to be able to, you know, go out the through the rest of the year without needing additional funds. Any further conversation on that with any of the board?
Well, I I guess I just want to ask, Kate, is there anything else that you need from us to make this successful?
No, no, we're good.
He needs to fix.
Expertise and brain power and excitement and energy, and the kids are going to fill our buckets and we are ready to rock.
Or there are five-gallon buckets.
And a side of positivity, Kate.
Got this. I was reading a great article about resilience and the number one contributor to resilience outside of a loving home when you're a child is a positive outlook. So I'm rocking that every morning. Attitude to gratitude, we got it.
But so I think that brings us back to seven dot two, which is the school calendar. And I know, Kate, you said you needed board approval to make a change to an in-service day.
Yeah, I just wanted to propose different days for early releases for the first half of the year. So they they were mentioned in the slide, but I'll just recap that. I'd like to propose we have an early release on Monday, ten twenty-six, on Monday, eleven-two, and Wednesday, eleven-four, and then also Monday, twelve-seven. So if it's approved, I will update the calendar and send it home to families and post it on the website. But those are the days we would like to adjust to for the first half of the year and leave the second half of the year as is for now, given there are just so many variables that could need adjusting later.
Put us, I'm sorry, what does the calendar have now? We didn't take the early release in September.
Yep. So the original calendar that you guys had had early release days on September twenty-fourth, October twenty-ninth, November fifth, and December tenth.
Okay, so we're shifting, right? We're not adding, we're shifting.
Correct. It's still four before the winter break. They're just on different days.
Okay. Okay.
So we need to take a board vote on this. So do we, can we get a motion to accept the the requests as presented from the for ten twenty-six, eleven-two, eleven-four, and twelve-seven as half-days?
I'm going to ask a question, I'm sorry, before we do that.
Okay.
With them all being Mondays, what does that do to the Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday crowd?
So actually, only one of them is actually after we have the return because we're trying to get the conferences in before.
Right, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's a great question. I thought of myself a couple of times until I reminded myself why.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to change the school calendar to reflect the half-days being ten twenty-six, eleven-two, eleven-four, and twelve-seven.
Motion by Sarah, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Cheryl, roll call or any further discussion? One, twice. All right, roll call vote. Cheryl?
I.
Erin?
I.
Carissa?
I.
Sarah?
I.
And I'm an I as well. All right, pre-K tuition.
Sure. So Selena, would you mind speaking to that?
Don't mind at all. So as you all know, we've been running a terrific preschool program for many years. And as all of our kids have been on remote, so too have our preschool children since last spring. And for our students that come as our peer role models, we charge them tuition. It's twenty-eight hundred dollars for the year. And my recommendation to the board is that while we are in this period of fluidity between in-person and remote due to COVID, I'd like to recommend that we not charge preschool tuition for the first half of the year, the twenty-twenty-one year, and then revisit this in February with regard to charging tuition for the remainder of the year.
Okay. And how many students is that roughly?
Right now, we have seventeen enrolled preschool students, but we did have some families who chose not to have their children come because it was remote.
Okay. And that that was seventeen paying?
No, Eric, it was, I think it was ten who were paying.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we we anticipated having about twenty-six kids start the year, but because we started remote, we had families who chose not to come.
And I guess my question to Molly, how does that represented from a budget perspective, right? Because we have a budget that it takes into account the expenses, but doesn't necessarily take into account the income.
That would have been, that would be on the revenue side. So it would be lost revenue. So that would essentially affect your fund balance at the end of the year by that amount of money.
Okay. So we're we're talking roughly fourteen thousand dollars right now. Thoughts from the board?
I'm okay with not charging them.
I guess to Selena's question, are they getting any services remotely? I mean, how is that sort of working right now?
We're offering four days per week of remote instruction per total of about an hour and a half a day.
Okay.
You can imagine our youngest learners trying to get on Zoom. Their parents are supporting them to be there. We're doing it in small chunks of time, half an hour. Some of the sessions are fifteen minutes a day, and it's Monday, Thursday.
Eric, I think Selena said there were ten. Eric, I think Selena said there were 10, 10 students that were peers. Is that right?
That's how.
10 times 2,800, right? Is that what I'm understanding?
Half a year.
Of the year, so 14.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't feel like what I paid for when my kids were in preschool. So I think I'm okay as long as we can swing it on the budget side. Cause we of course created a budget assuming that revenue. But I think that makes sense to waive that.
So can we get a motion to, to waive the tuition for, I guess, what? Selena, how would you label just tuition-paying students?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to waive tuition-paying preschool students for the September to February time period.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Cheryl. Any further conversation? Alright, roll call vote, starting with you, Cheryl.
Aye.
Carissa, or sorry, Erin?
Aye.
Carissa?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Alright, well, Kate, congratulations. I think that's the longest SMS administrative team report in history. So congratulations.
You're welcome. Anytime, anytime. We are asleep.
Now we're gonna have a budget session.
Oh my gosh.
Can you remove Cheryl, please? Alright, old business, board goals. I don't, I don't know if we want to tackle that one tonight after what we've gone through. Anyone opposed to postponing that one till our next meeting?
Thank you, Eric. I think it's a great idea.
MOA update. And I need to just take a look real quick and make sure that we ended in the same spot before I say anything. Apologies, this one still was fairly fluid up until, I think, yesterday. I can't find, there it is. So we did meet with the STA and the CESP, so Special Education Support Professionals. Did I get that one right? Yes, I think I did. So we did meet with them on the health and safety piece. And we do have an agreement in place. They were going to be presenting it to, you know, their, their team, right? So we're waiting to hear back from that. But we did have, you know, we had tentatively agreed to the terms on that. And then I believe if I'm not mistaken, that was the health and safety part. But the, the other part, Esther, from the district rate has been, has reached the same spot, I guess, where it's being presented to the, to the, to the unions, if I'm not mistaken?
The working conditions is they have another meeting scheduled, I think, Monday or Tuesday next week. And I think at that meeting, they'll either decide to make it a go as a whole or kick it to each district.
Okay, alright, so it's still, it's still in flight, okay. So, you know, we're, we're close, right? I think we're a lot closer than where we were just a couple of weeks ago in terms of getting those taken care of.
Eric, I know some, the other boards have, if, if you've, have you wrapped up the health and safety or no?
So it was being presented to the union yesterday. I have not heard back from Linda or anyone else in terms of any feedback on it. So I don't want to go into the specific terms, right? Until, you know, we've heard back from them.
Okay.
And of course, I get a text message right as I say that. That's not not from anyone that can say either way. So, yeah, so we anticipate having that wrapped up. And we think by the end of the week, at least on the health and safety portion of it. Alright, any questions on MOA?
Nope.
Seeing none, I'm afraid to ask about any new business. Seeing, seeing Esther shaking her head saying, no, we're done. Alright, so our next regularly scheduled meeting is Wednesday, November the 18th. Esther, do we anticipate having to meet before then? Is there any circumstances in which we can think of that we should have a meeting before we try and go back to school?
No, not unless something comes up that we had to change a plan or something like that. Or if you needed to do just a, a non-meeting or a meeting and then go into non-public about negotiations.
Okay. Alright.
Eric, you want to check your phone?
Okay, so they will be voting on Thursday and we can vote on ours in private. Okay, so Esther, I mean, I guess we can go into a non-private, non-public rate to discuss this as a board and we can take a vote on our side this evening.
That's, that's what I was trying to ask you, but so that's great that, yeah, we would, we can go and, we can go to we can go into non-public under RSA 91A. I think it's, yeah, E, which is negotiations.
If there's nothing else in the public meeting, we will look to go into under section E to review the MOA agreement with the, the teachers and the Special Education Support Professionals. So I'll make that motion at E59. Do you have a second?
I'll second. Erin, let Erin do it.
Erin, better hand up first, so.
Yep.
Roll call vote. Cheryl?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Carissa?
Aye.
Sarah? And I'm an aye as well. So to everyone who's on, thank you very much. We're gonna go.
Okay.
Alright, so I will make a motion to, motion to accept the health and safety MOA as negotiated for the STRATAM Teachers Association and the STRATAM Special Education Support Professionals as negotiated.
STRATAM Educational Support Paraprofessionals.
STRATAM Education Support Professionals, thank you.
Second your corrected motion.
Thank you. Any further conversation? Alright, so roll call vote. Carissa?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Alright, and we'd also like to go on record and say to Kate and Esther, you guys did an amazing job. Thank you so much for being awesome people, but being so dedicated to the students of Exeter, of STRATAM and Exeter and everywhere else in the case of Esther. Alright, any?
Thanks for always supporting us. We appreciate it.
I did have a series of texts saying how awesome the board was, literally a series of texts being like, our board is so awesome, they're so supportive. I mean, literally a string. I had 27 texts and I don't look when we're meeting because I get so distracted. So I look over and I'm like, 27, it was all about you guys. So thank you guys for being so amazingly supportive of the entire community. So it's not just the school, but truly the whole, the whole group.
Was that at the point where I started getting annoyed with people and asked for pixie dust?
No, you said actually questions worth answering. I was like, oh, okay. Alright, let's do this. I'm in.
He did it.
Totally did.
Nice job, Eric.
Alright, I look for a motion to exit our public meeting at 9:19.
I'll make it.
Oh, look at Cheryl all over that. Do you have a second?
I'm fast on that one.
I'll second. Alright, roll call vote. Carissa?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Everyone have a fantastic night. Thank you so much.
Good day, guys, everybody.
Good luck with the parents.
Yes.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.